I think we're waiting on one more person, right?
Check, check, check.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here for our public meeting of the Township's Traffic Impact Fee Advisory Committee as part of the process to adopt a transportation impact fee. If you're here for something else on the board agenda, including the sports complex, that'll begin at seven o'clock, the regular scheduled meeting. So just as a point of order, does somebody from our committee, which is, we have four of those members of the seven here tonight, I think a fifth will be joining us. Does somebody want to make a motion to start the meeting, call it to order? Second? Okay, all right. Thank you. Just some other notes that this hearing was advertised in the daily local news on April 5th as well as April 12th. And the draft report was also sent to Chester County Planning Commission, the local school district, as well as the adjoining municipalities. We did hear back from Chester County as well as East Mar- or West Marvo Township with some feedback, most of the feedback from West Marvo was just basically their consultants kind of explaining what we were doing here in New Garden to their township and board. So, and then Chester County, they had a few comments relative to the draft study. Most were formatting and informational and next steps. They did note that we were looking at the projections based on the proposed township zoning, but really no comment or nothing that we saw warranted any significant or substantial revisions, mostly just formatting. All right, so with that, just give a little introduction and then for those members of public, and then Brian will kind of go over some of the key issues or key items in the land use assumptions report, and then we'll take any questions. So last year, last spring, the New Garden Board Supervisors decided to start the process to adopt traffic impact fees and in order to identify and start collecting some funds to help pay for and offset improvements that were needed by future new development within the township. And as part of that process, they established a committee, which we have in front of us or part of it tonight. They designated a transportation service area, or you can do multiple service areas, but here in New Garden, we have one service area. It is not the full township. There are portions of the township that are not included because the Act 209 legislation requires only a seven square mile area that you can have as your service area. We'll show you a map shortly. And then we identified with the township 24 specific intersections to be looked at as part of the study. And then we got to work on the land use assumptions report. And we, over the course of several months, we completed that process. We have a JF report, and we're here for the public hearing tonight. And as I just noted, we did send it out for public comment and review. The next step in the process is to complete a roadway sufficiency analysis, and that is a, basically a traffic study of all the study intersections within the transportation service area and identify what future capacity-driven improvements are needed by new development. And then we develop from that study, a capital improvement plan that identifies how much those improvements cost, that allocates it to who is responsible for funding those improvements, whether it be the township, PennDOT, if it's some other entity, maybe a known development that has committed to improvements already, as well as future development in the form of transportation impact fees. And then the last step is to basically adopt the ordinance establishing those fees. So. All right. So. So basically, tonight, as I was mentioning, this is the land use assumption report, then that flows into roadway sufficiency analysis, and then the transportation capital improvement plan. And basically, you need to complete each study in a process in this, in this order. For the land use assumptions report, basically, the purpose of that is to figure out what the build-out is within the township. We do an ultimate build-out, and then we do a 10-year horizon. That 10-year horizon is what we base our further, our roadway suffici- roadway sufficiency analysis and our capital improvement plan as well as the impact fee on. So we look out 10 years and see, all right, what's the potential development within the township? And then we base our analysis and our fees on that. So we're not saying that, you know, this development is certainly going to happen. We're not recommending that it happens, that we're just saying this could happen. So we identify the improvements that are necessary or that are needed to accommodate that future development. And then we look at potential residential growth as well as non-residential growth, commercials, and that's all based on the zoning. So, and based on the, this whole process is outlined in the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Guide, and it spells out, you know, various steps. And tonight, part of that is we have to do a public hearing on the land use assumptions report, and we'll have to do another public hearing when we have a draft capital improvement plan completed, which will probably be early summer. And then after tonight, tonight, we'll have a recommendation from the committee for the Board of Supervisors to adopt the public thing. So if you stick around during the board meeting, the Board of Supervisors will take action on, on the report. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian. He's going to go through some of the details of the land use assumptions report. And just, we had a couple people come in since I gave my introduction, and just let you all know that this is the public hearing for the land use assumptions report. Other board agenda items will be discussed at the regular board meeting at seven. So we're just covering the public hearing for this one report.
Brian Donovan from Bowman as well, and we'll walk through some of how this all works with the Lua, everything that goes into it. And so going into first here, that some of the, some of the documents and some of the things I'll talk a little bit more detail about, about what informs our land use assumptions report. So we have, you know, the comprehensive plan for this municipality. We have zoning, and we look at developments that are approved and submitted, and we look at, you know, development, developable lands and the constraints, and also in particular looking at what we, you know, with the help guidance of the committee as well, to sort of say what is most likely to develop and how within the next 10 years. So that's a big, big part of that, and I'll talk about. So, and what John, John referenced too, what this goes into is first you kind of develop what we call a, an ultimate build-out or a future build-out, and that's sort of basically to say that, you know, if, if all the developable land was, was developed, here's what, you know, it could be. And then again, taking that back to a 10-year timeframe for the purposes of this. And that, as we'll, I'll take you to, eventually translates to at both the ultimate and the 10-year phases, a square, you know, a number of residential dwelling units, and then a number of non-residential square footage is what that will sort of translate to at the end. And then those numbers feed into the roadway sufficiency analysis, which then feeds into the capital improvement plan. So some of the background data that we look at in developing this is, you know, we talked here about population trends. So we, you know, we know what the sort of the growth patterns have been, you sort of see in the, in the table in front of you there, a big spike kind of in the 2000s, 2010, and sort of a moderation more recently. And so taking that into consideration on how, what we expect going forward, which is the next slide. So the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the whole Philadelphia region, and they're tasked with developing these projections for how fast they expect, you know, county, at county levels, municipal levels, all that. What's, what are we projecting for the next 10 years, and on and on and on? So you see kind of, you know, a continuation of a generally consistent upwards trend, but obviously like probably they're not looking at anything as kind of explosive as, as the rate from 1990 to 2010, which, you know, was really substantial. And this next one looks at New Garden in the context of sort of this, of some of the peer, you know, some of the neighboring municipalities and what, how it compares. You got, you know, sort of New Garden looking at a, from now to, you know, from 2025 to 2035, you know, less than 1% increase. This is relatively about what we're looking at for the, for the neighboring municipalities and pretty much exactly in line with Chester County as a whole. Sorry? Yes, I'm sorry, yes, annual percentage change, yes, yes. 7.2% increase over the tenure. Yes, thank you for clarifying that. So again, some of the things that sort of feed into this is this map here is portraying existing land use. So that's something that, you know, we look at, so what's, how's land being used now? And then how is that sort of affecting what we're looking at in the future? This map here shows the zoning, the, you know, sort of the, what the zoning ordinance will be if, you know, if and when sort of the current changes are adopted. So we kind of use that as a jumping off point. And what that sort of informs is you take it at a parcel-by-parcel level and sort of say, well, what's, what's, what could be developed here? We don't know what, but what, you know, according to the code, what could be? So taking some of that, those assumptions, and this develops, John referenced the transportation service area. So what you see there in purple is the bounds of what we call the TSA, Transportation Service Area, and the numbers represent the intersections that are going to be kind of the focus of these next steps. So all the intersections need to be within the TSA to sort of be eligible for improvements. You can see if they are. You know, the TSA obviously is with the help of the TIFAC and then the township staff, we obviously want the TSA to be capturing where we expect the growth to be, because that's kind of the point. You know, you, you want to set it up for places that we expect to grow, you know, you get the funds, and you, you know, devoted to the transportation improvements. So that's kind of the outline of it. I know it's a little crazy shape, but that's the sort of, it's at six. So as John mentioned, seven square miles is the limits of how big a TSA can be. So we're at 6.99. So we've got just in there, and that's all we'll be working with. All right, so I'm going to take you quickly through each aspect of this. As I talked about, the, at one point, at one level, you're doing an ultimate build-out, which is sort of for, this is like how much you could expect to see developed in, over a pretty long timeframe. It's not exactly specified, but it's to the point of, you know, the whole township being built out, as they would say. So according to that analysis, you get to, you know, about 1,600 additional dwelling units and about 18 million square feet of added non-residential space. Now, you won't be able to see, you know, these maps super well, but they're in the reports, and it'll, you know, you can see it as they're distributed. But what, what this map here captures is parcels in, you know, the north side, north area of the township that are seen as potentially developable, and then their colors are represented by what they are, you know, in the new zoning code. So that is that ultimate build-out. And then again, here for the south side of the township, seeing which are, you know, within the TSA, potentially developable according to, you know, the zoning, not currently built to probably, you know, what they would say is highest use or, you know, maximize kind of, so they would be parcels likely to redevelop. So what we get then from that is this table, which kind of shows ultimate build-out, and it's going to say at what, within which zoning district, you know, you're seeing the development potential in each category as you go through it. And it leads to those totals that we saw before, 18 million on the non-residential, and about 1,600 residential units. The percentages there are kind of guideposts that we used in part to get to the next step here, which is the 10-year build-out. So this is where we, we focus it a little bit, and we get the committee too, to help us and say, what do we think, based on what we know about the community, know about how development's going, which are the parcels that we think are most likely to develop in the next 10 years? That gets you to this figure, which is 442 additional dwelling units and about 2.8 million square feet of added non-residential space. So then same maps we just looked at before, but this time it'll be the 10-year. So, you know, you see a lot less color there. Those are the ones kind of to be potentially developable in the next 10 years. And if I take you back here, I was talking a little bit about those percentages. Like I said, we use some of that as guideposts to say that, you know, something could be at ultimate build-out, be very, very involved, this project could have a lot of things going on, but, you know, perhaps the next 10 years, you wouldn't see all of that. You might just see some of it. You might see 10% of it of what it ultimately will be, or 15, 20%. So those figures also helped us to get to this 10-year build-out figure. And again, so these are the parcels identified, what their zoning is, and then, you know, we have in our calculations what, you know, what, what that potential is and how that sort of contributes to those figures that you see going forward in our 10-year build-out. So I know that's a lot, but if there are some questions and discussion items, we can, we can go over that. Yes? Yeah, so, so on the new, right, on the new zoning, and I'd have to look at it again a little more closely about which zones allow which, but right, so purple here, I think enterprise, right, commercial, 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 like that, those, those would not allow residential, right? And obviously we have, so we have a, like a pink here, that's like low, low density residential. Maybe I should go back so I can see the colors a little better. And there's the darker orange is medium density residential, residential only, and then the reds are mixed-use corridor. So those can potentially have residential and commercial within them. And then residential flex, I think is primarily residential with, with some non-residential uses allowed. And then Village, Village Center and Village Gateway also have some flexibility to them too. Okay. Village Centers, that centers around Tough Kennaman Village, and it sort of allows a mix of residential and kind of smaller-scale commercial uses.
You know, it's a, New Garden zoning, very, it has some broad categories. There's a lot of flexibility where some of these categories, most of, when I do the, I've done these in the past, are a little bit more rigid in terms of what's allowed. So it was a little bit of a challenge figuring out what we're going to zone. That's why we rely on the committee to help us get that local on it and know what was a good assumption.
This one here? Oh, I know what you mean. Yeah, with the overall figures. Yeah, yeah. There you go.
Okay, we're not saying this is absolutely going to happen or recommending that it happens, it's just we felt it was a normal possibility that, you know, it was reasonable to assume. So when we go through the path setting and that five-year improvements, that we make sure that we count the public in terms of adding enough, you know, past capabilities and kind of the practical associated feedbacks. The, Brian's comfortable with it. Yeah, there's still other process, there are other steps in the process. We're not putting it over. It's probably, and develop, track up this on this kind of, this development where it's like, and we're identifying what it could be. So. No, there's no specific development. Sure. Like, right?
Thank you.
Well. Well, I think, you know. Fun.
That's the thing.
Sorry about it. Yeah. Okay. Thank you all. I, I see, yeah, get everybody back.
It doesn't measure.
Check, check. Hey, Dan, I got you online. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
And Dan, one more sound check.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I still don't have you here. Real quick, hold on.
I can hear you.
Check, check, Dan.
Yep, can you hear me?
All right, that's the way it comes through, so it'll be. I will max out my audio, Dan, but feel free to shout.
All right, I'll make sure I do that.
Okay. I'm gonna pull up the agenda.
We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the April 21st, 2025 New Garden Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under data, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
The board held a, an executive session prior to this meeting, starting at 5:30. The next agenda item is public comment. We want to keep it to three minutes. If anybody is interested in making a public comment. There's a yellow slip in the back of the room. Please fill it out. Put your name and your address on there. And then the first public comment session will be for non-agenda items, and then that'll be followed up by agenda items. Okay, does he wanna talk?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Randy Emerson, you wanna come up and speak?
The Emerson, I'm with the New London Masonic Lodge. And on behalf of New London Masonic Lodge, Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania and the American Red Cross, want to thank you for the use of the boardroom. For our blood drive on March 20th. The Red Cross staff were static. They're like, we can't wait to come back here. We got 20 units of whole blood, so we had a nice, nice blood drive on a weekday. I'm the Blood and Organ Chairman for our Masonic District. I help the lodges set up blood drives. And one of the things Grand Lodge does. For every unit of whole blood we get, we get it $10, not to us, but to a charity. So my charity is Howie's House. It's a gift-of-life transplant house in Philadelphia. So they were get, they will get a check for $200 for our efforts for that day. I already talked to Mike Buck, I'm looking to schedule drives next year. Right now, Red Cross, you can't just schedule a blood drive a month or two months. We're booking into 2026 already. That's a good problem to have. So I would like to keep a relationship with the township here in the future. And just want to thank you on behalf of the people that will get those donated units. And for Howie's House in Philadelphia, thank you very much for your generosity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for doing it.
Next on the agenda is the public hearing. That occurred at 6:30 and that was completed by 7 o'clock. Next, we're gonna get a presentation on the Sports Facility Advisory Company feasibility study.
Excuse me, I just had Dan or Ryan from SFC on and they hopped off the roof, so I'm actually trying to make sure they're back on here.
Uh, we are on.
You are? Okay, all right. So you can be heard and not seen here. All right. Well, here, good to go. And just if you can, since our audio for people coming through is kind of fragmented through our one speaker. Just shout as loud as possible into your own personal laptop speakers, just to make sure everybody can hear you.
Will do.
Just give me one second. And just to confirm online, you see the presentation?
Yes, that's right.
All right, just let me know when to advance and the floor is yours.
All right.
Actually, you want me to give a quick introduction?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Uh, so just as an update, if you remember back in the Jan, excuse me, December, public meeting. We approved the feasibility analysis to go forward with Sports Facilities Advisory Company. To look at our township as a possible location for what would be considered a recommended pro forma-esque based document. For a youth sports facility targeted for any types of options, but indoor, outdoor, you name it. It's just kind of going with the process of allowing them to kind of consult with us and kind of determine those factors. Based off of SFC's reputation in the market, in the industry, which kind of lends itself to. Dan and Ryan from Sports Facilities Company being here tonight to present. We can hold comment after it. It's, I can't remember how far, this is in the packet, the agenda item, so this should be available for everybody to have seen over the weekend. So without further ado, I will stop talking and hand it over to Dan. Is it gonna be you?
Yeah, it'll be some of both of us, but I'll kick us off.
All right, and yeah, apologies for the over-air audio, but when they come in through a Zoom bridge, it's kind of difficult to get it through the speaker. So without further ado, Dan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chris, and thanks for everyone for letting us spend some time here. We're gonna run through what is a lot of detailed information. We're gonna go pretty quickly and we'll look forward to answering questions, you know, when, when we have it. We'll do quick introductions, Chris. You can go to the next slide. My name's Dan Morton. I'm Vice President of, of our Pre-Development Services with Sports Facilities Companies, or SFC. I'll tell you more about who we are, what we do. Ryan, do you wanna give your quick intro?
Yeah, I'm Ryan Ferguson, Project Manager with SFC. Worked close with Dan on this project and excited to share the findings with you tonight.
So we'll share who we are and what we do very briefly. We'll just refresh on the process that we've gone through and then we'll get into the results. Our look at what we recommend the facilities to be. There's two models we're gonna share here in terms of the assets, the sizes. We'll get into our opinion of cost for development of those assets. We'll then review our findings from our operational analysis for the financial performance potential. And then the economic impact potential as well. And then we'll get into some case studies on how other facilities have been developed around the country. Knowing that no two facilities are, develop the same way. Every community, every project is unique. But wanted to share some, you know, thoughts and ideas with you on how other communities have, have tackled these, these projects. And then we'll wrap up with some key insights and talk about next steps. You can go through the next slide. So just at SFC, we exist to improve communities and improve the residents of those communities. We get involved in the plan, development and management of youth and amateur, sports, recreation, entertainment and event facilities across the country. That takes us to a lot of different models, right? But if these are facilities where the community can participate. When, where kids all the way, you know, multi-generation, all the way through adults can participate in facilities. We're interested to help the communities that we serve. You can see we've served, actually, this is not updated for this year. We're gonna see over 40 million visits in the facilities that we manage, over 3,000 communities that we've served. If you go to the next slide, just again, an overview of our services. We essentially get involved at every step of the way, from the idea for a sport, recreation, entertaining facility to managing a facility. What's really important to hear here is that we want to add value to every project wherever we can. And that could be in planning, in development, in management and optimization. We're only engaged, have been only engaged by the township for feasibility in the beginning, in the planning process. What we do though, what's important to understand is that everything that we forecast, everything that we study, anything that we put to, put in place. Is based on what we know to be true through our experience in managing facilities. We manage over 70 across the country right now. And the last 25 years of helping project get developed, helping projects manage and achieve success. So anything that we put into place, we would manage to, whether we are responsible for that, whether a public entity is responsible for that. Or whether another private entity is responsible for it. So just wanted to give you the context of our company and the services we offer, but what that means to where we are today. If you move to the next slide, it's just an example of some of the markets that we're operating in. This continues to update. It looks like it may be a little blurry there in the conversion for your, oh, there it is. But a variety of facilities, as I mentioned earlier, we get involved in all kinds of and all types. Everything from outdoor seasonal municipal water parks to fitness facilities, to family entertainment centers. To some of the largest sports tourism facilities that have been developed over the last, you know, 10 years. If you go to the next slide, we'll talk about this process that we call concept to concrete. It's really the development path for these type of facilities. There's a lot of words there. I won't read them all. What I want to make sure you take away from is, we typically see this takes about two to three years. To go from concept or idea, when we do feasibility, to concrete, open the doors, community is playing in these facilities. If they're the right, you know, structure and the right project for the communities that work in. And so we get involved in a lot of ways. Where we are today is we've completed the first two steps on this, this journey. Related to market feasibility and financial feasibility. The next steps from here will be understanding the partners, the potential funding sources. And then often to design, construction operations. If this is a project that the township wants to pursue and can pursue, given resources available. And so really importantly for us is, we're not here to tell you what to do. We're here to tell you, with this vision of developing a sport facility, you know, the desired outcomes. Here's what we believe the right facility could be, the feasible facility. And the outcomes that if you invest in this, or if you create partnerships to invest in this, this is what will happen and this is what it will take. And so really, we want to arm you all and your future partners or current partners with the decision-making data to make great decisions with the resources that you have available. So then, next slide, just really brief overview of what is a pretty detailed process. It won't go into everything. But for us, everything we do starts with the definitions of success of our client. What does success look like, both short-term, midterm and long-term? So as we look at this analysis, we define success for the community as creating a sport facility. That drives non-local visitation, people from out of town who will stay overnight, who will visit New Garden Township. And spend dollars in your community to take part in sporting events, right? Multi-day sporting events to drive new non-local visitation, which drives economic impact, economic development. Other definition success are to create a facility that the community has access to, to improve access to recreation within the community. There were others, those are the ones that were, you know, most important. And they influence as we look at market feasibility and financial feasibility, what facilities that we've recommended. So from there, after we define success, we analyze a lot of different data, a lot of different market. Everything from the demographics and socioeconomic breakdowns by drive time, local, sub-regional and regional populations. Sports participation rates for who's participating in these activities, existing service providers or competition. Who else exists? What are the other service providers? What are they offering? What do they charge? All those things to, to study the, the opportunity for new facilities. We cast a wide net to look at what are those assets that could accomplish the goals and that we're seeing a market opportunity for. To then study further and forecast what would happen if those are developed. We also look at existing data in your community, things like hotel room rates, occupancy, meal rates. You know, what other events have been hosted in other types of facilities? We also talk to stakeholders. Those are tournament rights holders. Those are folks that are interested in this type of facility. Those are both in our network, right, from our, our national network. We're, we're getting that perspective of our operators across the country. As well as those specific to your local, sub-regional, regional community. We take all that data and we filter that into our proprietary process to say, here's what we expect to happen if these facilities are developed. And what facilities are justified based on the definition of success, the market opportunity and the financial reality. So a lot of things go into that process to then come to where we are today. So if you go to the next slide, we're gonna start to share the two models that I mentioned before. As I shared the definitions of success, one being, you know, sports tourism, non-local visitation. So it needs to be large enough to host large-scale events and community access. We've created two models here, really focused on those definitions of success, because there's some opportunities with different assets. That will perform differently depending on the goals here. And so the first one is optimized for sports tourism. It's optimized to drive non-local. It's optimized to drive non-local visitation to an indoor facility through sports and events and create economic impact while also still creating community access. The second model is focused on the local market and the community. What are the facilities that are demanded in need in your community that can create access to the community, that could potentially create a return on investment for private involvement? But they're really not going to drive overnight visitation. They're not large enough. They're not of the same inventory to do that. But could still be successful in creating a community hub in the location. So those are the two models. One focuses on large-scale events, the other focuses on community, community use. So we'll share those two models. If you go to the next slide, we're gonna start with the sports tourism model. So in order to reach the definition of success, to be a facility that is a destination for sports and events, we've recommended a total of about one hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet of indoor space. The biggest space within that is a sixty-six, sixty-seven thousand square foot indoor event and court space that is really for large-scale open events. We then have, that can be eight basketball courts and sixteen volleyball courts. That also has the ability to have telescopic bleachers to come out, be about fifteen hundred seats. We also have meeting space that's non-sports related as well. We have a family entertainment center. Really, that's entertainment type of entities that do a couple of things. These can be arcades, laser tag, you know, mini golf type, things like that. We think there's about fifteen thousand square feet of, of demand for that space. That'll help create a fun atmosphere, a reason for people to go, a reason for siblings to participate and go to the facility. But also, we can drive about three to four times more revenue per square foot over that space as we can over sports spaces. So as I think about sustainability, it's important for the facility to drive revenue and to create a sustainable model. From there, we've got support spaces to make this a, a tournament class facility for everything you need from food and beverage service to offices, to restrooms, et cetera, to support the activities within the facility. So about one hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet of facility space for the sports tourism model, eight basketball courts that can be cross-lined with sixteen volleyball courts, but really sixty-seven thousand square feet of flat floor, open competition space, which is right-sized to the opportunity to generate these types of events in the market. So if you go to the next page, we look at what else do we need to support that facility? We've recommended about five hundred and forty-seven parking spaces with setbacks and things like that. We've got some additional space. We expect this facility to take up just under ten acres of, of space between building setbacks and parking for the facility. In terms of costs, if you go to the next slide, we analyze what we expect the cost to be. This isn't a cost estimate, right? We're not in the market. We're not a GC doing cost estimates specifically for your site. There also isn't a design yet, right? And so those specs aren't there. But this is an opinion of cost based on recent finished projects that we're working on, tailored to your market, what we'd expect the cost to be in New Garden Township, Pennsylvania. You can see we look at hard costs, field and sport equipment for other FFNE, like food and beverage, soft costs for construction. That would be like design, architect, professional fees. Really importantly, we include soft costs for operations. So as we get into the pro forma, we forecasted what year one to year five operations look like. We also have forecasted what pre-opening operational expenses would need to be in order to go out, sell this facility, build the operations so that it's ready to go day one. So the biggest expense there is going to be pre-opening staff budget. For example, we recommend hiring your general manager twelve months in advance. That's pre-funded. So you have that in the funds to be able to go and do that. We also have escalation included in there to account for rising prices. None of us are crystal ball, but what we can see from the industry is we expect costs to continue to grow at about three percent a year with two to three years taking to build these facilities. We've built in a three-year escalation to give you hopefully what's the most realistic expectation for what it would cost to develop these facilities, which is in the forty-eight to fifty-eight million dollar range for the sports tourism model. We're gonna talk about how that is feasible, could be feasible and why that's justified. We're gonna dive into the community model next. If you go to the next tab, Ryan, do you want to talk us through that facility?
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. So sort of that last facility is able to serve the community, but also drive, you know, sports tourism events from the region. This facility is more so geared toward just that local community, about a thirty-minute drive from the facility. And so the first space here is we have a indoor turf field. We call it hybrid turf area, as it can be broken down into a youth multipurpose field, small-sided multipurpose fields for some of those younger age groups, baseball softball infield, and then the ability to have a drop-down batting cages and pitching tunnels over that area. So that's about thirty-two thousand square feet. We also do have a family entertainment center in this model as well, a little bit smaller at ten thousand square feet, but a similar idea there. And then we do have a sports performance training area, twenty-five hundred square feet. So this is gonna be more sport-specific weight training and some of those things for those are, who are trying to get better at their sport and have some of that kind of off-the-court or field training access there. We also do have a fitness center, about eleven and a half thousand square feet of kind of your traditional membership fitness with some exercise rooms to go along with that and obviously locker rooms and a child watch room. And then we just also have all the, you know, flex spaces and support areas that go along with that. You're like your offices, concessions, and then some medical lease space included in this model. So overall, this one comes out to almost ninety-nine thousand square feet and just over two acres for the building. And we can go to the next slide. And then site development for this, about three hundred and forty-six parking spaces. And again, this includes all the setbacks and green space and all those things as well. So the total area needed for the facility and parking combined for this one is about six and a half acres. And then next slide will be the opinion of cost. So everything Dan mentioned holds true for this as well, for all the costs broken out. And looking at a range again, and in the middle here at about forty-one point three million for this local community model.
I was gonna say, so next we're gonna dive into what does the operating model look like for these two facilities? So again, sports tourism facility first, community facility second. We'll talk about the revenue opportunities, cost of goods sold or variable expenses that increase or decrease with the amount of revenue that we drive, our gross margin, our overall overhead operating expenses and EBITDA or earnings before interest, tax, depreciation, amortization. The keys here, before we dive into the models are, we look at these as standalone operations. So what we're not doing here and not showing is any efficiencies that the township has or any other partners, right? We're looking at them in a vacuum of, here's what it would cost to operate these facilities independently. So you have a really good view of the full cost of how, how much it takes to, to operate these facilities. And then for EBITDA, it's really our operational performance. So this does not include any cost of capital or debt service payback on the funding, the, you know, the forty million to sixty million at the biggest range of those two models. The key here is we don't know how it's gonna be funded yet, and these facilities take creative funding sources, which we'll talk through. And so we're looking at operational performance. And then, you know, as you move forward with this, any decisions around capital and things like that, you obviously can factor that into what is being driven by the operational performance. But one to be clear, that's not included in the financial numbers right now. So if you go to the next slide, we'll talk about the financial performance of the sports tourism model. So what we do in our pro forma is we analyze all the revenue streams that are gonna run through each facility. You'll see everything here from tournaments that we're gonna run for basketball, volleyball, other court events, seated events, meetings and non-sport events. We look at local programming potential. So you can see basketball, volleyball, footsaw and court rentals. That's really gonna be leagues, camps, clinics, rentals to the local population, right? Those within that thirty-minute drive time, but goes beyond that for, for more specialized training. We then get into more ancillary revenue streams like the FEC, Family Entertainment Center, things like birthday parties. You can see food and beverage, hotel rebates, all the way down to sponsorship and advertising revenue. We forecasted about two-point-eight million in year one, growing to about four-point-two million dollars in year five from revenue. Obviously, the sports tourism model is both focused on both generating revenue, but also non-local visitation. So as you look at those numbers, keep in mind, we're gonna talk about economic impact and the impact this could have on the community. But right now, we're just talking about operations. A couple of things to point out, sponsorship and advertising, for example. We're conservative by nature to look at what is the most realistic opportunity. Obviously, nothing's guaranteed, but we're looking at if this facility is built, here's what we would expect to happen. And again, we would manage to any numbers that we put in place. So that's the ethic we work under. So sponsorship and advertising, what we have not included the assumption for is that you're gonna go out or this facility is gonna go out and sell a, a multi-year naming rights deal to name the facility something. That could be worth a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. What we're doing here is we're assuming that we can sell sponsorship, things like pouring rights deals and other relationships with local businesses. But we're not assuming naming rights deal, because that's something that gets negotiated down the line. So we are being conservative there, just to give you some insight into that. There are areas where this could improve, but we want to give you a realistic picture of the opportunity for this facility. So about getting up to about four-point-two million dollars in revenue, if you, if you flip to the next one, we look at the expense side of the equation, both cost of goods sold, those are your variable expenses. Think things like your referees, instructors, equipment awards for specific sports programs. For food and beverage, that's gonna be your food costs and the cost of employees that work in the concession. We then have our overhead in four main areas, facility expenses, those are gonna be your physical building expenses. Things like utilities, maintenance and repairs, janitorial and cleaning. You'll see operating expenses, those are anything related to the business. You'll see management fees. We've assumed here that you hire third-party professional management to execute on these numbers. That fee, those fees are built in. You'll see an insurance budget, marketing budget, all those things to be able to operate the business within this facility. We then have management payroll. Those are gonna be your full-time positions, things like general manager, marketing, business development person, program directors, finance manager and others. You'll see, you know, within this model, the positions and the compensation recommended. And then we have payroll taxes, benefits, bonus. That's the cost of employment for everybody within the model, whether you're a cost of goods sold employee or a, a management overhead employee. The important thing to point out here is this does assume, as I said, third-party management. And so these costs of employment are from the private sector. So it's what costs a private company to do that just based on the way we set up the model and the way we'd recommend to look at this. And so everything here, this is a summary of what's more detailed in the pro forma, where you can go look at how many registrations we have for basketball leagues and what are we charging based on fair market value? And what is the utility expense? Know that everything is based on our experience at the national level, but customized to your community. Take into account things like the cost of electricity per kilowatt hour in your community. That's factored into our formula for how much utility cost will be based on what we know these facilities use. So just know, national level experience customized to your community. If you go to the next slide, as we summarize revenue, cost of goods sold and operating expenses to give us our operational performance or EBITDA, we would expect the sports tourism model to require a subsidy in year one and year two before breaking even and driving, you know, positive operational income year three, four and five. That's not uncommon in our industry. Typically, facilities take about eighteen to thirty-six months to ramp up to sustainability. You'll see though, right, as a, you know, this facility at forty-eight million dollars in the middle of the range, there isn't going to be cash flow in order to pay back the capital cost. That is pretty standard in the sports tourism industry, is these facilities are overbuilt for the local market, right? Eight courts is a lot of courts, right? Where your local community doesn't need eight full courts. But in order to drive sports tourism events, we need to have eight courts to be big enough to work with the rights holders and to drive the tournaments that bring non-local visitation. And so we've recommended that size facility, not because it's right-sized to the local opportunity, but, but it's right-sized to the event and regional opportunity. And so that facility is oversized in order to drive economic impact. However, we see a lot of these facilities across the country are subsidized beyond the initial ramp-up. And so in your market, to show that there's opportunity to drive revenue, drive economic impact and create a positive operational performance is a really good positive message here in terms of feasibility, that this facility can cover its own expenses from an operational perspective and drive economic impact. We do expect that it has to come from sources that don't require the same level of payback as a traditional bond, you know, bank or private equity. And so we'll talk about some of those opportunities. But at the summary level, we expect the sports tourism model to break even and create some level of operational performance, but not enough to cover any significant portion of a payback on capital. We'll talk about economic neck, impact in a minute. We'll go to the community model if you go to the next slide. Same, same structure, so we're not gonna show all the detail. But if you look at that pro forma, you can look at all the revenue we've got in there, memberships, membership costs, all those things. We see this facility driving about one-point-nine up to three-point-six million dollars in revenue. You can see then the bottom line is healthier from a pure financial standpoint. We expect this facility to acquire a subsidy in year one before generating positive operational performance year two, growing to about one-point-four million dollars in operational cash flow in year five. That facility is more right-sized in its individual components, so the turf field, sports performance, membership fitness. It's right-sized to the local opportunity. And so you can see that that drives more bottom-line profitability. It won't drive economic impact, but in terms of creating a community asset and community hub for the locals and potentially creating an opportunity for private investment and return from operations, there's some opportunity to do that, which again, we think is, is a positive message here for this facility as compared to, to the rest of the industry. And so if you think about the two models, sports tourism can break even operationally, isn't gonna pay back any capital, community opportunity. We do believe there's, there's the potential for it to pay back some of the capital based on the operational performance. So we'll talk about economic impact. Next slide, if you want to move there, it's really gonna be focused on the sports tourism model. Why invest forty-eight million dollars, essentially break even to a little bit of cash flow in operations? Why would you do that? Because of the economic impact potential. Ryan, I'll let you walk through economic impact as part of the next step.
Yeah, it sounds good. If you want, yeah, jump to the next slide. So first thing we'll look at is the per-person spends, average daily expenditure that we would expect someone coming from beyond ninety minutes into the market to spend during a tournament or event. So that ninety minutes is typically where we see people make the decision to spend the night in market and then beyond that as well. And so you can see we have kind of everything broken down here from your hotel lodging to dining, to transportation, retail, entertainment. And so we would expect each individual person spending per day one fifty, a hundred and fifty-eight dollars all the way up to a hundred and sixty-eight in year five. Just want to point out also for the lodging and accommodations number, as that oftentimes brings up questions. Obviously, you can't get a hotel room night for thirty-nine dollars. We assume three people per hotel room with parents and everything traveling along. So that would technically be more of a hundred and twenty-dollar hotel room night and then obviously growing, growing from there. You can go to the next slide. And this is the essentially events, tournaments and events that we're forecasting for each year, all the way from basketball tournaments to volleyball, other tournaments and events that could be like dance, cheer, gymnastics. And then also large meeting events, conferences, trade shows, those sort of things that can utilize the ballroom meeting space we have as well as the court floor space for those types of things. And so starting off in year one, looking at about twenty-six of those events happening and then growing up to forty in year five. And again, each of these has a breakdown in the pro forma that goes into, you know, what size, how many courts we're expecting for that tournament, how many teams, how many spectators, all those things as backup information. So taking all that, we can go to the next slide and look at the actual economic impact of non-local visitation that's coming in and direct spend into the market. So non-local days in market, again, these people coming from outside of ninety minutes into New Garden Township is eighty-four thousand, eight hundred, almost eighty-five thousand people in year one, non-local days, growing to a hundred and forty-two thousand in year five. That translates to about twenty thousand, five hundred room nights in year one, growing to thirty-four thousand, seven hundred room nights in year five. So that's kind of the economic impact drivers, actual economic impact, direct spend from non-local visitation in year one is about thirteen point five million and then growing to twenty-four million in year five of direct spend into the local market. And then we also went ahead and looked on the next slide at tax revenue generation, which is where that, that money's being spent on these amusement tax and then hotel motel tax. So amusement tax is based on direct ticket sales entries into these tournaments and events into the facility. And then obviously hotel motel tax as well. So you can see with those combined, getting about a hundred and eighty-three thousand year one and then growing to three hundred and nineteen thousand in year five. And Dan, anything you want to add on that before we hop off of economic, economic impact?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, obviously, these are not, these tax numbers are coming right back to the community. So economic impact's great to talk about in terms of overall impact on the, the market. These are dollars coming straight back to the municipality. And then, you know, just another metric for you, if you look at the cost to develop the facility and then the cost, the five-year cumulative economic and then the cost, the five year cumulative economic impact. What this model shows is a generation of about one dollar and seventy five cents of economic impact per, for every one dollar spent for construction for over the five year period. Obviously, it's more than a five year uh, building if you were to build it. Uh, but that's a metric a lot of communities use to make decisions. That's right in the range, we see communities to make the decision that these facilities are worth the the investment at about a dollar fifty to two dollars uh, generated for every dollar spent. So you're right in the middle of that range, good result for what we'd expect to be possible here. So if you go to the next slide, I'm going to go through this really quickly so we can get to questions. Um, we've got four example facilities that we helped through this process through concept to funding, to development, to management, and we manage these four assets right now. The first one, if you go to that slide is called Advent Health Sports Park at Blue Hawk. This is a privately owned development. Uh, the sport facility is about, it's phased, but it's about two hundred and fifty thousand square foot in phase one. It's surrounded by about a hundred acres of mixed use development, uh, whether that's commercial, uh, out parcel, commercial, there's a hospital, uh, there's residential. This private developer developed this facility to enhance the marketability and sellability of the development, create more value in that. It is incentivized by what's called a star bond. It essentially allows the development to keep sales tax generated, usually go to the state, rebate it back to the development. Those star bonds are paying uh, for the capital invested into the sport facility. And so this facility, just stand alone, would not cover itself to create a private investment. But with public incentive, that's a unique uh, funding mechanism, but the concept is there, right? The money spent in the development, going back to pay the bonds on a sport facility, allow the private developer to build, own this asset to create more value for the overall development. If you go to the next one, uh, that's Hu- Hoover Met Complex in Hoover, Alabama. This is a publicly owned, purely publicly owned asset. It was eighty million dollars, a hundred and twenty acres. It's a indoor facility with eleven courts, outdoor fields, tennis courts and some other amenities. There's also a baseball stadium that there that hosts the SEC tournament. They developed this facility purely looking at sports tourism. You can see we generate over sixty eight million dollars in economic impact, eighty six thousand room nights. The important piece here is I want to make sure that the conversation isn't sports tourism or community. Uh, this facility is a sports tourism asset, creating all the success for that, this facility is operationally sustainable. But over sixty percent of the programming time goes back to the community and it's given back to the community for load and for free or to low cost by the city because that's the decision they made to invest in that community space. Obviously, there are impacts to that, impacts to the P and L. We obviously manage this facility, so we manage this with the city to ensure they understand what that decision entails. But it's a sports tourism facility that is developed and creating a ton of community access when not being ho- ho- hosting those events. So just want to be clear on that, that sports tourism facilities aren't just sports tourism facilities. They're built big enough to drive events, but then they also create a lot of community access depending on how they're developed. This one is purely par- uh, public. If you go to the next one, Cedar Point Spec, Cedar Point Sports Center. This is another example of a privately developed facility, but heavily publicly incentivized. Uh, it is owned by Cedar Fair Entertainment, they run amusement parks, they have hotel hospitality businesses. They built this facility, it's a hundred and eighty five thousand square feet, ten courts to drive economic impact and to drive business to their other uh, businesses they have in the area. It was about forty two million dollars, over sixty percent of the funding came from public incentive. County hotel tax uh, uh, bond is being paid back by the county hotel tax. There's a Firelands Regional Medical Center partnership from a medical provider. Uh, they put in six million and another two million from a city tax financing. This facility does over twenty million dollars uh, in economic impact. So an example of privately developed, heavily publicly funded, but not a commercial mixed use development like Advent Health. Go to the next slide, last one is Emerald Acres Sports Connection, similar, more similar to Blue Hawk. This is in Mattoon, Illinois. It's a facility that's going to be two phases, first phase is indoor, second phase is outdoor, it's focused on sports tourism. They used an existing business district over mixed use uh, to create the uh, dollars to pay back bonds for the sport facility. And then future commercial development will continue to to pay back bonds on phase two, which phase one um, is just now opening uh, and phase two is already underway, uh, they're moving forward with that. So this one is a example of privately driven. It's actually owned by a nonprofit with a board that has private and public representation. We manage the facility, it has the city, the county, the uh, destination marketing organization, schools and some others on that, that board that actually owner, uh, the nonprofit owns and oversees uh, the development. Heavily incentivized by mixed use and special tax districts in order to create the bonds to pay for those facilities as they wouldn't pay for themselves. So give you some examples of how facilities are funded. Uh, we'll wrap it up with just a couple key insights, you can go two more slides. I think the takeaways are, we believe there's feasibility in both the sports tourism and the community models, depending on ultimately the direction that the township and partners want to head. If you want to head in the direction to move forward with either of these, the sports tourism model creates the opportunity to create a uh, operationally sustainable model and drive economic impact within the range that we see other communities making, choosing to make these investments. And then the community model could be a great asset to serve local community uh, access to recreation and potentially create private partnership through the operation. So appreciate the time, hopefully you could hear me uh, trying to keep up uh, the volume for for this, but we're happy to answer other questions as you have them.
Alright, so a lot of information, um, and thank you, uh, Ryan and Dan. Yeah, that's a big thing to chung through and obviously more technical and nature type document, but um, just on its the basis of what was presented today, wanted to open up for public comment, obviously for board and residents.
Hi, Christie here, Christie Podolsky. I was just wondering what was the average lifespan of one of these facilities?
Yeah, we look at the usable life of a facility as, you know, a standard forty years uh, development, but there are, there are facilities that will operate beyond that. Um, as you look at uh, long-term capital replacement, those costs aren't in the operational performance. That's something that you would have to consider as whoever owns this facility of creating a fund to to look at long-term capital replacement, but depending assets, right? Voting, traditional, but you know, standard forty years. And then your assets like hardwood flooring, right, is closer to fifteen to twenty years with the right maintenance and then, you know, down from there. So the equipment within that facility will be, need to be replaced, you know, uh, earlier than any of the physical asset.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Dan and uh, Ryan, Richard Gau with the Chester County Press. Um, I'm curious to know of the many facilities that you um, have worked on and helped develop with the sports facilities companies. Uh, I'm curious to know what impact do these facilities have on the use of high school and small college sports facilities? Are they essentially putting them out of business? Cause that seems to be what's happening, what I suspect will happen here if something is ever built in New Garden Township. The, the really top notch high school facilities in our area will, will suffer from becoming potentially obsolete. Wanted to get your comments on that, thank you.
Yeah, good question. Uh, we actually see the opposite happening. Um, in most communities, these facilities serve as a uh, additional inventory, a partnership opportunity to host more events. But also to relieve uh, some of the stress put on school infrastructure from non-school use, right? Uh, you know, we're seeing that across the country that uh, there's more and more demand for school facilities that can, you know, strain those resources, that can push out uh, school use. Where these facilities can come in and help to relieve some of that from non-school use and then create more opportunities for colleges, universities, high schools, all of those for additional space. But also in partnership, we operate uh, Myrtle Beach Sports Center, for example, in My- Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. We pa- partner with the Technical College there as well as the Community College and the Recreation Centers to host bigger events. That facility is eight courts. Um, we are not building or recommending to build or built there for the largest event that we can host. There are events that could host twenty court courts. What we're doing is right sizing for the most frequent and the most uh, opportunity uh, for for those events. There will be events that require more than eight courts if you develop this facility. And so partnering with those facilities actually is complimentary. So in most facets, we see these as complimentary to existing school, uh, recreation center and other uh, infrastructure.
I'll just add as a parent with a child in local sports, this is probably desperately needed in the area. I think there's limited uh, resources for sports and they're fighting over very limited space. So I mean, I can see that people are driving pretty significant distances just for your club, like local sports, so that's my two cents.
Yeah, if you have a comment, just please approach the mic, name, address for the record and uh, whatever comments you have.
Hi, um, Vince Bancino. I noticed every picture that you showed up there was just the inside of the sports complex. You don't show a picture of the whole complex with the hotels and all the businesses around it. That's what I'd like to see because that's where all the land is mostly taken up by. And you don't show any of that, so I was just a little bit, um, our area is very small, so I think it was eighteen million square, how many square feet were there the? Were the, in New Garden Township, I forget, uh, we're down here. So we're not going to make any profit back for at least, let's say eighteen months to three years. If, if the max became, see, what I don't agree with is that you're looking at a projection of thirty miles out and then ninety miles out, which is pretty significant. And this is a small little township with minor roads, so I just want to make the board aware that that's a concern for me and I'm sure a lot of people in here. Thank you.
Is this particularly talking about the area? That many, many, many acres between Sunnydale Road and
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said, if you can speak into the microphone, it's tough.
The land between Route Seven and Sunnydale Road?
Are you talking about White Clay Point?
That's what you want to call it?
And just to fold this back to prior economic development discussions, this was about a potential possibility as a commercial anchor for a mixed use development of which that's the site that's zoned for that. So this is a potential option and when we talked about kind of what are considered to be anchoring functions for other additive business on a mixed use site, this was a proposed option. So this is the genesis of the feasibility report to show what that kind of, we'll call it anchor box kind of means. So that's really, so just to answer your question. Yeah, yeah.
So this wildlife sanctuary, which is all that's left in this area really. Um, untouched for a very long time. Um, could be very beautiful and part of maybe the red clay uh, preserve. Um, with trails and uh, and keep it so the animals have a place to live. Um, we have too much traffic in this area already. We got the middle school there, we put Saint Rockers in there, Egypt Run turned into a highway. That was a dirt road when I moved on there. The traffic is crazy. I mean, it it's, it's beyond my thinking that you could possibly imagine putting some kind of complex in here. I mean, where would you get the water sources, where would you get the electrical sources? Where were all these sources coming from that are going to provide for this gigantic complex? And where are the roads going to go? You're going to take Egypt Run right into this place, you're going to come off of Route Forty One, you're going to come off through, through Seven and through Saint Anthony's. I mean, I don't see a, a, a real plan there with road names and ideas that, that strike me as any good idea. Um, I mean, there's endangered species. I don't see how this can benefit anyone. And um, I understand you're a, you're a JP alum?
I'm sorry?
You're JP alumni?
Are you saying that I used to be an employee for JP? Yeah, I'm just sorry, I'm like, I'm just.
Just wondering?
Yeah.
Okay, is that not a conflict of interest?
No.
I just want to express my feelings about uh, that particular area not being developed at all. And let's make it beautiful. Let's make it part of this beautiful area. We have enough here. Got the middle school, we got Saint Rockers, you got, we got too much going on. And I don't know if we have the resources or the utilities to do it. And the construction alone would take years. And put us a lot of people in inconvenience. So uh, I would stand against it for my dying days.
Thank you, thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
Joe Kozel, nine thirty two West Baltimore Pike. Um, I just have a question on this and like that two oh nine. Um, do these models factor in like those potential traffic fees? And um, like a lot of it was kind of private, public funded. So if the, we're charging them all these traffic fees and then the public has to turn around and fund or kind of funding the traffic fees we're trying to generate. So my question is just the, the future two oh nine and how this uh, kind of involves with bringing all these people in.
Yeah, I was gonna say that's probably more of a specific question for the act two or nine process. That's more of just a total land build out, kind of overall zoning, land use function. Uh, in terms of an actual individual development actually ticking into uh, like an active, you know, development plan. Um, essentially that is part of a transportation impact assessment, you know, assessed for that individual property that would generate an amount of trips that would be assessed a fee. Uh, in terms of correlating that with kind of offsetting inputs and outputs in terms of like public funding going towards this to support it and not, that is, and it's probably maybe even premature to even have those conversations because there's no understanding right now because this is still theoretical feasibility of can this be done in the township. And so you would essentially look at, when you're doing anything, uh, what are all of those levers that you have at your disposal in terms of incentives? So I would say that it's, it's too premature to even have that type of conversation. But that would be under consideration to make sure that we're not essentially taking one in and then throwing it out the door and the other.
I was wondering like, if these were considered in the soft costs or like if the act two oh nine passed and the
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have permit fees, we have uh, uh, I mean, trying to go through all of them. Uh, a future impact fee for traffic.
Yeah.
Uh, we have recreation fee and lieu of fees that go into site development. There's a whole stack of fees that come with any associated land development. And it's like, if you're looking at a municipal contribution to get something like this up off the ground, are those considerations? Yes, I have no idea what that means for New Garden Township, I don't think anybody at this stage has any idea. Cause you don't understand the level of private investment that might come along and kind of negate to have municipal contributions to build something. So it's really dependent upon that future use case of, here's a potential site. We know that this type of function is feasible for our market, is anybody interested in building it and where? And then that goes into the process of land development with a potential municipal, I'll call it, public-private partnership opportunity.
Hi, Jeremy Abelson from Somerset Lake. Introduced myself a couple of months ago and I'm new to the community, kind of throwing myself in here. A couple of questions. What's the minimum density considered for your successful projects? I looked at a couple of pictures and those projects look like they're, at least a couple of them look like they're served by either access roads from major highways or uh, uh, limited access boulevards or at least large, large transaction corridors?
I'm sorry, just to specify density for what, I'm just making sure. And um, Dan and or Ryan, I don't know if that's a question for you.
See in the communities that successful facilities like this one proposed.
I, I, I mean, based off of the use cases, it looked like it was pretty variable, but I'll let Dan kind of show us like maybe some different types of markets. That sounds like you're talking about different types of communities.
Kind of hoping that they'd have a
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right, it, it is variable, there are some that have, um, you know, bigger road access, more density Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. It, it is variable. There are some that have, you know, bigger road access, more density immediately around it. You know, whether they're in a mixed-use zone or not. But we actually develop more facilities in rural communities than we do in more urban communities. The reason for that is because the impacts that these facilities can have is oftentimes more meaningful to small communities. Actually did some work with, with Philadelphia where they were considering, you know, what do we do with some land? It made no sense for them to take this much acreage to generate, you know, forty thousand room nights. Where communities like New, New Garden or smaller, those are very impactful. And so, we actually see more facilities developed in less populated areas because the traffic means more. Although, you know, that's it, all of the track turns, you know, the, you know, the impacts there, can we get people in and out? All of that is valid and would be studied as part of the next steps. Today, we don't have concerns that this couldn't be feasible based on that for what we know.
You've mentioned room nights in a number of points during your discussion. I also noted that one of the projects was partially financed by over twenty-one million dollars in hotel tax. How many, and I'm not familiar with this, how many hotel rooms are in New Garden Township? So, how many room nights would be from the facility's nature in our community?
Correct, yeah, that's part of the feasibility. It's one where if you look at a tourism model and that's a function of it, and it's one where if that's an avenue towards funding it with that type of revenue stream, you have to build it and they will come type of money. So, that's one where that is an obstacle to that type of model, not like a conduit to help it be more successful. That's more so for general concern of all of the municipalities in the area, the leverage, some sort of regional tourism type function. You know, Longwood, Cadet Square, everybody, there's a dearth of hotel areas in the Route One corridor right now. That's really hamstringing just that level of capacity needed to get overnight stays in the area to bring in direct spend from outside the community. This would be one where commercial development clusters around successful anchoring functions. If you define a successful anchoring function, the likelihood if it's a tourism model to associate with a hotel on the site is more capable of happening than not, if that's kind of makes sense. That whether or not you could use those revenues in second-class township land to fund bonds, that's a different question because I don't know if that's even something that we can do as a precedent in Pennsylvania because there's a lot of constraints about financing options in second-class townships, just throwing that out there.
Just continue to struggle as I did the first time I heard this a couple of months ago. Why, it seems like the township supervisors seem to be shoving high-density commercial development in a rural community. We have a, we have, oh, please hold, I actually took notes. Seven hundred and two people per mo, per square mile in our community. The minimum suburban density is one to three thousand. So, we have a neighborhood, a community of distinctly rural character, a very, very mixed use. We have a couple of communities like Hartford and, and my own that I'm new to, sorry. But it just seems like a proposal, a heavily dense proposal like this, which would be not just the only one, but simply an anchor for additional high-density commercial development on our little roads next to my little community. Wildly out of character.
It's really not. If you're looking to offset some of the taxes that are necessary to run the township, you're looking at how expensive it is to repair a road, the infrastructure that it takes just to get here. And we're looking to not put that tax burden on the residents, but have them come in through other sources that isn't you, the residents, right? So, you know, we're trying to basically bridge that gap through other revenue sources. And so, yes, that does mean development on Route Forty-One, which is a major thoroughfare through the state. This isn't a rural road. Yes, there will be people coming and going, I think, based off of your, looks like every other week, something like that, some type of event projected potentially. But, you know, if we do nothing, the alternative is we have to raise taxes. There are significant like shortfalls. So, that's not something I don't think any of us want to do. So, that's my two cents. I'll zip it, but.
Thank you.
Just because I'm going to be cutting time, are there more specific, like, I'll call them technical questions for the SFC group? Or if it's more of like just visions and outcomes for the township? I want to kind of make sure that we're giving a use of time with our consultants here. So, if, is this more for them or for, okay?
Okay, Michael Lyric, Landenberg. In Chester County, there's already one on Marshallton, Thorndale Road, and it's called United Sports. You're familiar with that? So, it's basically the same thing what we're talking about and it's only a half hour away from here. So, how are we going to substantiate that and this? I've been there.
Yeah.
And it's a nightmare to get in and out. And there's better roads and better structure there than there is around here. So, my point is why do we need this here when there's other things we can do?
I think we're pretty limited in what we can get additional tax revenue off of.
But he's saying the first year it's twenty-six events. So, that's, that's like half.
That's the first year. There's like a lot of years.
But then it would go up to like one, one a week?
Forty years is the lifespan.
Yeah.
So.
I don't, I mean, I just know with a half hour, the same thing we're talking about doing here is there.
Yeah, if that's a question for the SFC group and the actual pro forma, they take into account every single functional type of community center that's even within ten minutes. Like YMCA Kennett is in that analysis. So, it's more of a function of it is feasible. And just having a discrepancy between thirty minutes drive time between us and an area north of us, this is still market-supportable for what fits here in New Garden Township as a feasibility function. That's kind of what that means.
One other thing that's important is this is privately owned property. This isn't like we own this property. This is a developable property. The developer can build whatever they want on this property. They could build a shopping mall, they could build, you know, they can, they have a lot of options. This is one option that is, in my opinion, less damaging than other options.
Responsibility to improve this area?
We.
Just because they own it?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
They own it, you said they own it.
Correct.
It's privately owned.
Correct.
But don't they have a responsibility to the people that live here to make it better?
I think that's what the, but that is.
No, they don't?
No, that's.
So, you guys just, so we're at our mercy?
Just real quick again, if there are more detail-related questions for the SFC group, and if they're not, this is, sounds like a different conversation. And I want to keep it in the focus of the SFC presentation more than a comprehensive planning-type discussion for the township. So, with that, if we have technical questions for SFC, we'll put those at the front of the line here and then we can say goodbye to, to Dan and Ryan.
Yeah, hi, again, Dan and hi, Ryan. Again, Richard Gock from the Chester County Press with a follow-up question. In, in your, in the many facilities that you have helped work on and develop in conjunction with private ownerships, municipalities, et cetera, what are the key factors in determining the space where these event facilities are located? What are those key factors that say we want to build it here?
Yeah, the number one, in the context of the question of private and public partnership, the number one, you know, thing that we're looking for is not what we're looking for, it's what the private sector's looking for. And it's how do they make money, right? They do that through mixed use. And so, the opportunity to create the anchor destination that Chris talked about and the opportunity for the private sector to have mixed-use development to create a return for why this facility would be developed, that's the number one factor in facilities that are developed with private and public partnership. If it's purely public, then it's a more nuanced question of where does the public entity want to see traffic go? Where do they want to see development? Where do they want to see revitalization? We work on a lot of products, projects that are downtown real revitalization projects like Rocky Mount Event Center, Rocky Mount, North Carolina. That facility, that, that community had a, had a blighted downtown. They developed an indoor event center, similar inventory, different setup and some unique things. But that facility led to the development of new hotels, new restaurants. There was four million dollars of real estate transaction when that facility opened in the downtown. So, if it's a public, purely public, it's, you know, where do you create value to the community in terms of access and redevelopment and economic activity? Public and private, if the private sector's involved, the reason why they get involved in these facilities is how do they create a return? How do they recreate a return out of a sports tourism complex? It's not in the operation, it's in the mixed-use value that can be created around of it as a result of the anchor and the visitation that can be generated.
One final question, if I may, and that has to do with access. You've heard comments from a lot of the residents in this area. I'm curious to know, when you decide where a facility will be, how much of an impact or a factor, may I ask, does easy accessibility to major routes play into this? Because I, I asked that because one of the images that you showed of a success story was right next to an interstate highway. The Cal Ripken facility is about an hour and south, south of here. And it is located right next to I ninety-five, easy-in, easy-out access. Here would be very, very challenging to do so. So, how much of a factor is having easy accessibility to a major thoroughfare? Now, Route Forty-One in this area is a, is a major thoroughfare, but it's essentially two lanes. So, I wanted to get your comment in terms of what works best. Thank you.
Yeah, there's not a, a hard and fast rule about access to more than a two-lane, uh, major route for these facilities. You can think of them as destinations that you're putting into your GPS, right? A visitor is saying, I'm going here. And so, a lot of facilities are actually not on major thoroughfares because they're, that's not the most val, or that is the more valuable land. And a lot of times they're utilizing less valuable land and then commercializing the, you know, land that's more frontage. And so, we see a lot of facilities that are built not on major thoroughfares. Now, obviously, there needs to be access to get people there. But because this is a destination, rather than something that people drive by and say, hey, I want to go to the sports complex, they're actually more often than not, not on, right on those major highways. Obviously, with the caveat that we haven't done traffic studies, nor do we do traffic studies, right? That would be a professional level firm that you hired to do that if you move forward with that. So, all of those studies would be, need to be made. But there isn't a concern today that there couldn't be feasibility, given the access to this location.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments and questions. I think we can let Dan and Ryan go, right?
Thank you very much, Dan and Ryan, and I will be reaching out to get the, if there's any final documents or anything. But we'll make sure that all the pro formas are eventually uploaded to the website. We'll have a dedicated spot. Anybody can access kind of what those mean. But, you know, like I said, this was all about just the feasibility study.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have the meeting minutes from the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion, we adopt the minutes of the March seventeenth as submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the treasurer's report. There were paid invoices in the amount of four thousand and two dollars and fifty cents and unpaid invoices in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Steve, do you want to give your caveat?
Yes, so I have, there are two checks which are for my current employer. So, I have to recuse on payment for RM Crossen in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. And then there's another one for RM Crossen for three hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you, Steve. Can I have a motion to approve the paid and unpaid invoices in such amounts?
I'll make the motion to approve.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the public safety reports. Steve, do you want to go first? That's fine, here.
Here, okay. Where you want me, Chris? We'll go back. All right, quickly, our first quarter twenty twenty-five report. EMS actual, fire actual, we did operate in the red for the first quarter. A little bit is because of how our municipal structure and payments are. New Garden is the only municipality that gives us quarterly payments. All the other municipalities do six months. So, June, July, we'll get from our other four municipalities and then December. So, the other thing is fire actual, we did purchase updated first rescue tools, so Jaws of Life. We went battery-operated, which is where kind of the standard is today. Placing, they're probably about fifteen-years-old units, so that was a big upgrade for us. This is EMS dispatches, so we had a total of four hundred and seventy-seven dispatches for ABNO EMS, which is the highest we've had in the past five years. Three hundred and fifty-nine of those were in New Garden Township. Three hundred and thirteen of those were transports. Most of those come back to Bowling Green, the rehab facility on Newark Road. That's, it used to be forty-plus calls per month for us. So, that's kind of keeping us quite busy. Fire calls, we had a hundred and forty-nine calls for the quarter in twenty twenty-five, which is considerable, about more than past five years, about thirty calls in the past five years, past five years. Ninety-two of those were in New Garden. And then just a breakdown of where our calls are, so we're about thirty percent between fires, which incorporates building fires, brush fires, vehicle fires, things like that, and rescue emergency, which are car accidents, rescues, industrial rescues. We've got some of those for, that's our breakdown. A couple of highlights we have for you. For the first quarter, we did volunteer five hundred and forty training hours, seven hundred and twenty-eight meeting hours, duty crew hours, which were six PM to ten PM. Volunteers covered five thousand and two hundred and sixty-four hours between those. Call hours totaled two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three, and miscellaneous activity hours were six hundred and seventy-two, which might have been fundraising or cleanups or something like that. Career staff covering fire shifts and EMS shifts covered eight thousand and two total hours. Penalty my nerds, sorry. Two things going on, so we received the Mushroom Festival grant for, I think, almost five thousand dollars, if not exactly five thousand. Will receive that in two weeks at the dinner. That's going towards new AEDs. So, we purchased or are purchasing eight new AEDs for all the fire apparatus and response vehicles. So, each cheese vehicle, traffic unit, all the fire trucks, we got a brand-new AED. Couple of years ago, we had a perfect opportunity where fire chief arrived first, shocked a resident and she showed up a couple of months later at one of our meetings. So, a great first initial response by that and kind of good use of funds. We're finishing a paving project, so our driveway is all torn up right now. But that was from a, a grant from the, one of the state reps for paving, updates for the bunk rooms and anything. So, finishing that project up. Last thing I have is for the, we have the steering committee, which is the merger between or the merger study between West Coast Fire Company and Avenue Fire Company. Right now, we're getting into kind of the meat and potatoes of budgets, what the delivery models may look like overall, bylaws and standard operating procedures and things like that. So, we've had about eight meetings this year. The meetings continue. Coming to June, we're going to have another Saturday meeting where we're hoping to bring it all together to both memberships and kind of see where both memberships kind of feel and moving forward. Our consultant is pretty confident that we're on the right track and we're moving pretty fast. Believe, he's been talking with a few of the municipalities and trying to bring the collective ten municipalities eventually together over the next two or three months and kind of get the support of everyone and keep that moving forward.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, we, we have a number of other agenda items, but at the end of the meeting, we'll give you the opportunity to speak. Thank you. Lieutenant, you want to give your update?
Hello, everyone. I'm Lieutenant Joe Versagley with the South Chester County Regional Police Department. Give you a little snapshot of what our first quarter twenty twenty-five looked like. All right, so our Part One crimes, which are. All right, so our Part 1 crimes, which are basically your more serious crimes. One, Hilltop Crab House, still currently under investigation. The thefts. We see an uptick towards the copper wire theft again for mushroom houses and more industrial facilities where they have heavier gauge power cables. The other thefts, for everyone here. And if you pass it on to your friends and relatives, especially the elderly, we're getting a lot of scams. You know, with all the technology we have now, it's getting a little easier. So we know bank scams, internet frauds and things like that. We're getting a lot of residents that are actually out, you know, a lot of money because of it. So it's kind of what we're seeing there. So if it doesn't look right, it's probably not. If it seems suspicious, just go right to your bank or right to whatever company is trying to, trying to talk you into, you know, taking out $30,000 and now it's all probably legit. Yeah, for all of our Part 1 crimes. Up 1.15, but like I said, that had a lot to do with the thefts. Part 2 crimes are the ones tend to be a little less serious. We're back in 2023. As you see from 2023, we're well below half what we were. That has a lot to do with our investigative team and our officers out there just being present and doing a really good job. Again, frauds. On the same note as what I spoke about earlier, these might be the ones where they, you know, didn't necessarily get away with it, but, you know, the victim needed a report number or something for a bank. Juvenile, drugs, they're tracking about where they normally are. Again, everything's well down. Calls for service, so these are just our everyday regular calls that we get. We handled 661. Again, as Mr. News said, a lot of them are going to be our city and that's fire. Some clean, a lot of people green, city conditions, our domestics. Traffic relief complaints, just obviously with people in the area that always have an issue and that number will keep going up just with, you know, population, more people traveling. Pretty darn template, we had 196 citations in the first quarter, 185 warnings and made five DUI arrests. You see the past years, DUI arrests are down dramatically. That's a national trend. That's a good thing. Long ride shareies like Lyft and Ubers, people are making better decisions. Fewer DUIs per year. And again, that's national, so that's good. You'll see our citations or warnings are down significantly. We're running on half of our traffic safety unit. The other half is currently deployed in Africa for the National Guard. So and our other traffic safety unit, guys, we're a little thin. We're box on our quartermaster and our fleet maintenance. So he's also responsible for some shift coverage. So he's a little older. One thing I will let everyone know is we have the approval to purchase scales. They get calibrated on Friday in Harrisburg. Our traffic safety unit now can utilize those to handle a lot of our weight concerns on roadways and bridges where we couldn't necessarily do much about before because you have to have your calibrated scales. We haven't had those. They are purchased and so you will be seeing it out there running with those, working on some of our weight. For crashes, 18 reportable, those are your worst ones, you know, where someone was injured or a vehicle being towed. Non-reportables are more offenders. 37, as far as crashes are concerned, across all of our jurisdictions, we're cracking up the state. Again, the updated traffic. We're staying there and then they're not going up. So it shows me people are paying a little more attention to their drive. So of course, across all of our jurisdictions, we had 2,064 total events through Chester County Police Radio. That's everything. New Garden had 1,519. Our average talk time is either six minutes. Breakdown of what most of our calls are. The majority of them in traffic, so the guys out there are being proactive and they're trying to keep that, trying to keep those crash numbers down. People drive safely. Phone assignments, again, people calling in to report various things. Once they're reported, they get categorized properly. So if you call as a complaint about the neighbor or dog, and we obviously turn it into an animal. Stable supports, school checks. We have a general order where officers have to conduct one school to that day. So that's why that number is up there. Traffic issues, a lot of medical. Medical disorder complaints, heart conditions, special conditions, respiratory distress, sick people, well-being checks, domestics, and then of course, the rest. That slide there. The only two things I have other than that. We have a young lady with us now. Her name is Michelle Pablo Ortiz. If you're ever out in the street and see us with a passenger, she is a West Grove resident and an intern with us for Westchester University. She'll be completing a 450-hour program with us for her major and may end up applying with it someday. And on that same note, we have a young lady by the name of Anna Linda Aguilera. She was given a conditional offer for employment. She's going through a background investigation and a few other things that are pre-employment conditions. And hopefully, she'll be starting with us sooner than later. She is a local Tuff Keniman resident, bilingual. So definitely going to be an asset. So we're looking forward to getting her on board. Other than that, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Next, we'll move into the monthly department report. Chris, did you have any commentary on that?
No, in the interest of time, the report is there. It's mostly just a rundown by department, by department, by department, just monthly performance metrics and continuing to fold this into the monthly agenda just to kind of reflect how we're doing as a township. Just in terms of capital projects, this should show the completion of the fuel pump farm. So it's now good to go. And of course, that's being kind of operational for not just necessarily township staff and of course, Public Works being the primary user, but also police and fire. So it's one where it's kind of the joint community gas station, if you will. So that's programs up and running. And I don't know, Kenny, if we've had any hiccups with it, but so far, so good. It's not in the report because they just finished the project in between months of when we did our update. But if you participated at our New Garden Easter egg hunt, I don't know if the people in the audience were there, but the Quonset Hut project is pretty much about 90% complete. So the reskining of the outside facade and everything looks really good. So what was a pretty significant eyesore, because it was the first thing you saw when you drove in, is now somewhat of a better aesthetic for the park. So that will be provided with visuals in next month's report. But other than that, it's mostly just the routine metrics that we track as a township, if you don't have any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Next item is Act 209 Land Use Assumptions Report Resolution. The board is being asked to consider to authorize Resolution Number 2025-009, approving the Act 209 Land Use Assumptions Report submitted by the Traffic Impact Advisory Committee. Chris, do you want to make any comment on that?
The report was committed, was performed by Bowman Associates. And the hearing was publicly advertised and held this evening at 6:30. And I don't know if you have anything you want to comment on? No? No? Yes? All right, thank you. So the committee met and determined to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they approve the Land Use Assumptions Report. And that's what this resolution does, that you accept it and approve it.
In terms of just where we are in the process, I think that might help. So right now, with this acceptance of this land use, it was just more of kind of a preliminary framing of just the kind of elements that go into, I'll call it the LUARC because I like speaking in acronyms. But with that, we're kind of midway through the roadway sufficiency analysis, which is really kind of the bread and butter of looking at intersections throughout our township. And then, of course, looking at potential treatments in terms of grading, classification to improve capacity as a function of additive trips generated within the community as land development occurs. And then, of course, that tips off the kind of big ticket mechanism for us, which is that Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. Because that's going to give us really the capital estimates and I'll call it recommended treatments at each intersection as like a future capital plan for the township. And then we can start, you know, as development happens and you get the kind of impact fee revenue, kind of broker conversations with developer and PANDA to make those improvements actually fully realized. I don't know, that's really kind of the genesis of it. And we're still targeting no later than August, potentially July, at the probably more feasible timeframe to complete that.
So this is a step in that direction?
In that direction. Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-009.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the Avondale Fire Company in Southern Chester County EMS, second quarter appropriation. The board is being asked to approve the appropriations in the amount of $297,811.75. Is there a motion?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we've got the Thompson escrow release, reduction of the secured funds for the Thompson tract, Stone Bridge at Longwood, in the amount of $175,829.38, leaving a balance of $3.7 million. Is there a motion to approve the reduction?
All approve. Or make a motion to approve, brother?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the Basiani subdivision resolution. The board is being asked to consider to authorize Resolution Number 2025-010, authorizing the subdivision for the property located 365 Egypt Run Road. There was a typo in the agenda. It said waivers instead of subdivision. So can I have a motion to approve the Resolution 2025-010?
Yeah, thought I might.
That's fine.
Do we need to amend the typo?
No, I don't think so. I think because the header says subdivision resolution, which is what it is. It just, the second line says waivers. Just to be clear, last month, the board approved eight waivers for this property. But this is a subdivision, a two-lot subdivision for property owned by Laurel Valley Farms, prepared by Howell Engineering. It's located at 565 Egypt Run Road. UPI number 60-5-18. It makes, it's a 45-acre property. It divides it into two lots, one gross area of 40 acres and another of five. So that's the subdivision plan. The waivers were granted and are listed on the resolution. They were granted last month. So just a motion to adopt that.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Got any opposed?
Me.
Next, we have the Brittany Hills sketch plan.
So it's the sketch plan for Brittany Hills for the front lot, two lots, commercial lots, to potentially go from commercial lot A and lot B and do residential, nine residential units in that location as well. And within your packet was the sketch plan for review. Overall, and then you can see the planning commission's meeting was receptive to the plan with the following comments. Brittany Hills received a density bonus for having mixed parcels and removing those would potentially allow other mixed-use developments to similarly negate the basis for their increased density. So that was one of the concerns. Residential would preserve the existing wall and landscape, the front wall that's there, that fence landscaping. So the residential would preserve that. A good use of the existing brick building could be a dentist or other such office, which Tom can go into a little further. HOA requires 67% of the membership voted to add the properties. The HOA president was there in support of it, of the project or of the plan. And then installation of infrastructure, such as pathways, so we would have sidewalks to get across 41 to match the sidewalks on on Star Road here. Look, it's like, yeah. So that was pretty much all the planning commission things. And then if there's any more question, any questions for me, I can answer them or we can go ahead and let Tom.
Thanks, Robert.
All right.
Yeah, Tom Schreier, Healthcrest Associates here this evening on behalf of Wilkinson Homes. With me in the back corner is Bill Romanelli. We are here with the sketch plan just to gain some general feedback from you all for the development of 9,003 Gap Newport Pike to subdivide the two existing parcels, which comprise about 3.6 acres into nine residential lots. Eight of those would be single-family semi-detached, which mimic the housing on the opposite side of the street and currently constructed within Brittany Hills. And then the ninth one would be ultimately the conversion of the existing brick building back into a residential structure. All lots would be served by public sewer and water. I don't necessarily think we were talking about constructing any sidewalks along 41 because I think in our opinion, that probably wouldn't be the best of ideas for places for people to walk. As well as I think the density bonus, I haven't actually confirmed if there was an actual density bonus given to that development at the time when they did the mixed-use development. But I know it is in the code now. Obviously, that was 25 years ago. So I would need to double-check if that was the actual case when the project was approved. Like I said, just here tonight to get some feedback from you all prior to kind of putting together a formal application for the overall subdivision.
So a couple of questions. I would be curious on the density bonus, number one. Secondly, does the proposed development, is it consistent with the ordinance that we have in place today?
It is.
It is.
So residential is an approved use within the UD zoning district.
And the density?
The density for UD is three units per gross acre. As I said, the property is about 3.6 acres, which would actually yield 10 units. We're currently only proposing nine.
And then the other question I would say is, at the time of the development, and Bill may be able to answer this, was the ultimate right-of-way given to PANDA at the time of the development? Because obviously, going down the road, there's going to be the need for more right-of-way or improvements to Route 41. And if not, what would that do where the ultimate right-of-way is to your existing proposal? The sketch plan I'm looking at.
Yeah, I would imagine that there was some type of ultimate right-of-way established as part of the original development plan, whether it was dedicated or not. I would have to look into that. Obviously, the roadways for the overall Brittany Hills subdivision have been dedicated. If we needed to dedicate additional right-of-way along 41 to accommodate any future improvements, the, I think the only thing that would really affect it is that there's that 75-foot setback off of 41, which we're able to comply with now. Whether, if it would come to be a problem or not would be kind of dependent on how much additional right-of-way we would be looking to dedicate along that frontage if it was required. The only complication with that is that that existing stone house, which was an important aspect of the original development, is basically on the road. So any additional right-of-way on the road. So any additional right of way would probably cut that half in house, house in half. So I don't know if that would necessarily be feasible unless the township has changed their purview and would want to tear that house down now.
And as far as sidewalks, I, I would say that there should be some consideration to connect the Brittany Hills community, which has nice sidewalks throughout, to our park. I don't think that's too far of a reach to get us across the street here, Star Road, and some sort of pedestrian crosswalk from that community. I see, not every day when I go through there, but I do see community members that walk from that community over to this park in an uncontrolled crosswalk, and then they have to walk on Star Road till they get to the mini storage.
It's something that we can absolutely look into. Obviously, forty one is a PennDOT roadway, and therefore, any crosswalk across it would be at their purview. I do know that they typically do not like crosswalks that aren't at actual red lights. And obviously, there is not a red light there, which would lead the community members having to go all the way down to the gas station across forty one and then back up the hill to be able to get to the park, which probably would be a little problematic.
Well, there's, there's a senior community that's a ways up forty one, I think, in London Dairy Township.
Yep.
Right where George Fox School is or was. And they have a signalized cross buck there with a sign that no one pays attention to. But it, there's a light there saying, hey, maybe you should check out for seniors wandering across. So I don't know what the context is of that of, how that was approved. So that's something to probably look into.
We can look into it for sure.
Certainly, if there's a way around it, I think that's a good point.
Just to provide context, that is in the RSA study for the Act two oh nine process, this intersection with a potential treatment for either a signalized light or even a circle or whatever that ends up around about. Sorry, I'm showing my inner jersey there if I learned to drive. But, but yeah, that is a potential future treatment there. So this would be, I, I would say, if there's a consideration of contingency upon something like that to connect it to, I don't know. But it's, it's PennDOT's road, so there is a process to it. But.
Yeah. And then a question for our solicitor. I know this would be amending an existing subdivision plan. So maybe you can get us keyed in on the process for that and.
Well, this is, this is going to change the plan itself, right? It's not just a narrative or note. So I think the whole plan would have to be amended. There would have to be an amendment to the plan.
I can understand your position. I think ultimately, the record plan obviously contemplated development on these parcels from the get go, which some of the general notes within that recorded plan required those specific parcels to come back through the land development process if they were to be contemplated for development. So are you saying that this amends the Brittany Hills subdivision in itself, or just because we're developing these parcels with residential, it now affects the Brittany Hills subdivision?
I think I have to look at the plan, but it, I mean, there has to be a recording that notes what you're doing if it's contrary to what is of record. And so my understanding is what is of record is not these four lots. So there would need to be
Correct.
A sufficient recorded document so that anyone trying to figure out the story of this plan could see it, not anything terribly complicated.
Yeah, totally understand. I mean, we do that often with just a partial superseding of the record plan for the overall developments of lot A and B.
Something, some, just something that identifies the original plan and what the change is, yes.
So then in twenty five years, we knew what happened.
Exactly.
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and that would be the, essentially the process. And then they would have to go through subdivision and land development process through preliminary and final plan. No. That's, that's all the questions that I have on this.
Well, I don't, I don't know that the board, I mean, the board can speak for itself. From my perspective, I think saying, yeah, this is great, do it, is not something they can do sitting here. But I, I think I understand what you're doing. I think they understand what you're doing. Certainly, I would need to look at something in more detail from my perspective as to what's your next step, I think.
Yeah, my next step would be obviously to formulate a formal submission and submit for a preliminary final subdivision.
But I guess if you're asking if, assuming those are not an issue, there's no legal issues, I guess you're asking if we would be supportive of that? Is that?
Yes.
Yeah, right. All right. We don't, can't, we can't say in a perfect world, we would do something?
So that's, I think, a risk to say, yeah, do this, then they can come back with a plan and you don't like it.
All right.
I guess, because your concern is that you would think that it should be developed with commercial if the record plan required it to be.
No, I think it, I, I have a concern that you're asking the board to say, yes, this is a good idea, without the details that would be part of a plan. So I guess if your question is, does this board understand your desire to switch it from commercial to residential? Okay. That I don't have a problem with their, their saying individually what they think of that. So that, if that makes sense.
Sure.
No particular formal action, but, but certainly they can individually say what they think. And then you have to come back with something more detailed.
Bill Romanelli with Wilkinson Homes. The question I would ask, though, is do we all agree that the zoning permits residential? I think that was Steve's original question, that the current UD zoning allows residential, whereas twenty five years ago, the current, the UD zoning didn't allow residential?
I think as their solicitor, I'm going to recommend that I answer that question. That's a very detailed question. That's kind of up to your engineer and perhaps me as a solicitor and our engineer to answer.
So I guess as the developer, what you're saying is go engineer the plan and then submit it to, and you'll let us know if it's okay or not?
Just as every developer do, does. Yes, you have to say, this is what I want to do here. Does it comply with your ordinance? I don't.
Sometimes in a lot of townships, they'll at least give you some feedback if they think you're on the right trail or not, or if this is offensive to them, they'd give us a heads up.
The book says what the book says.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, we've got, we have an amendment to the twenty twenty four year end report and budget. The board's being asked to consider to approve the final fiscal year twenty twenty four year end budget amendment as presented. Any commentary, Chris?
Yeah, the, the actual, you know, process for doing this is more reflective in a January, February year end type thing. We had some transition and turnover in our finance department. So the ability to do kind of the year end reconciliations was delayed and focusing more on our audit. So this is essentially a reflection of what the forecast position was as a function of approving our FY twenty five budget. So the numbers reflect the kind of financial strategy. It was a positive year. So the story there is we're still kind of accruing surplus that basically came to the township through an increase in permit revenues that came in stronger than forecasts. Big part of that was the school project that added in almost three hundred and fifty K more in in-year one-time revenues for that. And then we had some end of year Q four large property sales that plus up our transfer tax revenues. And of course, we're taking that as surplus and kind of carving that out over the next three years to service a structural surplus use of cash to abet any potential increase in need for taxes, just because we're still making up for lost time and about a decades plus worth of deferred kind of increases while we increase costs. So that's kind of the get right strategy. So that's still intact. This is just a kind of planned outcome on the general fund side. The other major change, I'm not a major change, but the major turnover was year over year rollover of FY twenty four to FY twenty five capital projects. That was discussed as a manager report item. I can't remember if it was February or March last night. Time is running all together here right now. But that was more of a reflection of what we actually did in twenty four, but still plan to do was rollover projects in FY twenty five. So any questions about that? Otherwise, it's still the same structural narrative that we approved the budget in an FY twenty five budget back in October. But as a function of that outcome, you have to kind of amend it to show where your actuals ended up. As an amendment to the budget, yes.
Right.
So this would be an FY twenty four year end A two amendment.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
And of course, all the detail is there, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next two items are related. First one is to approve the proposal from B Bergvall for audit services at a cost not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars. And the second item is to authorize resolution number twenty twenty five oh one one, appointing B Bergvall as auditor for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Chris, I think you mentioned that we previously had approved a different auditor.
Yeah. So as part of the FY twenty four approved audit function and at our org meeting, you know, we did still have the anticipated plan to go with our former auditor, which from twenty two to twenty three and into twenty four was BBND. But during the twenty twenty four fiscal year, BBND is no longer, they merged with a company called Withem. Withem and difference between BBD and Withem was BBND supported municipalities, some nonprofits, very regional in nature. When they got acquired by Withem, Withem is a global accounting firm. So we went from being kind of like a, a priority municipal partner to like we fell down the pecking order. And that really elongated our FY twenty three audit period to the point where it was like, can you guys make up lost time? And that was a performance understanding that they didn't meet the mark. So this is essentially removing them as our anticipated FY twenty four auditor. Of course, we went out seeking kind of inputs for professional services. We went to all of our local municipalities, so the, you know, Kennett jurisdictions, some other jurisdictions in the surrounding area through the Chester County Consortium of Managers. So the top of mind vendors were assessed. They're in the actual agenda item there. So I can't pronounce the names. One of them is Zalensky Axlerod. They do a lot of county performance as well as the borough. The other one was Miley. They do a lot of townships in Chester County. And then, of course, B Bergvall, which does kind of a blend townships, nonprofits, but they're very regional around the Philadelphia MSA. But most of their townships they support are in kind of Bucks and Berks and Montgomery Counties. But all of them do a tremendous job. That's why they came recommended. And we ultimately chose B Bergvall because not only were they kind of the lowest cost, which is a good savings to present, because they're actually lower than what our current auditor was going to provide, but also, too, they have a strong relationship with our financial systems provider, and that's Dallas Data, whose brokers are Casell relationship. So to have an audit firm that's really good, that also knows your financial system is another good bonus. And so this was the best outcome.
Thank you, Chris. So can I have a motion to approve the proposal from B Bergvall for audit services at a cost not to exceed thirty five thousand?
They're moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, authorize resolution number twenty twenty five oh one one, appointing B Bergvall as auditor for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the airport cellular tower lease.
So there's a lot of momentum happening in the area about just assessing the values of your long-term land leases with cell tower companies that are located on public property. So this is an ability for the township to get an understanding of what it's valued at for our one facility up at the airport. And of course, if there is potential of having a return on that to the township in terms of just what would be the, the potential bid award on it, you know, we have Hiles property rental revenue kind of coming in as we would kind of rent out that property. So think of it like a one for one swap. And the whole is kind of assess all avenues for additive cash to address a lot of our capital liabilities right now. So we're looking under all the couch cushions.
Thank you. Next, we have the fiscal.
This would just be, I'm sorry, a, a motion to advertise the bid.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We advertise the bid for the consideration of.
Advertise the sale, I'm sorry.
The sale of cell tower leases for the New Arden Airport.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we've got the fiscal year twenty twenty five line painting contract.
I think this one's pretty straightforward. It's a annually budgeted item to just do line painting in the township. This is, I think, a continuation with Alpha as who's done it in the past. They've done a tremendous job. And it's in kind of association with our paving program, so.
Is there a motion to approve?
This would be for Hillendale? All the roads, sorry.
Can I get a motion to approve such painting contract not to exceed thirty five thousand seven hundred?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we've got consideration to approve the subdivision land development ordinance consultant, Michael Baker International, at a cost not to exceed twenty nine thousand nine hundred ninety six dollars.
So if anybody can remember back, when we did the initial solicitation for proposals for the zoning ordinance, part of that was also for SADO, which you can think of them as just kind of organic functions of each other. If you're doing zoning, you should look at your SADO ordinance as well. So we did get bid responses back from all of the zoning consultants as an add option of a SADO ordinance revision. And during the, I, I think it was either March or April of FY twenty four, we approved the zoning consultant with a potential future approval of the SADO component to it, because it didn't make sense to start both at the same time. So this is just bringing that initiative back forward. We do not intend to pursue a VPP grant, just because this is more of like a technical process that can be done at the planning commission level. And so the goal would be to go through that process with Michael Baker as our continued ordinance consultant. And it would be done through kind of, I'll call it the more standard MPC channel of leveraging your planning commission to go through it with staff support. So with this now starting potentially in May, it's a much quicker process, which is why it's, it's, it's a lower consulting fee. It would still end around the same time as the zoning ordinance proposal. So you would complete both initiatives at the same time, roughly around October of this year. And then you would do the full kind of ordinance implementation when you update all of your ordinance at one time, rather than doing one chunk now and then one chunk later. You just kind of meld it all together.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a motion to approve the proposal from Michael Baker International at a cost not to exceed twenty nine thousand nine hundred ninety six dollars?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chris, you want to take the next two, one for board and the other for commission appointment?
Yes, we had a gentleman reach out to the open space review board, pretty positive comments about participating in the process. So the review board was pretty happy to welcome his participation. So their request was to nominate him. So we had obviously a lot of kind of down draw in review board committee members. This pluses back up their numbers. And it would be a recommendation to basically create a new three-year term with effective start date of immediately and then an expiration date as of January first, twenty twenty eight. And that kind of keeps the staggered terms. And just to continue with the conversation, it's pretty much the exact same thing for the historic commission. Some of their associate members were able to be more stronger in attendance than current members. So they're just going to basically do, this is what they described it to me, kind of a swap of status. So Mr. Robinson and Jones would hop into full membership and then the current members that they're replacing, I can't remember off the top of my head, would move into associate status for the historic commission. If there's any question.
I don't think he's, I don't think they're replacing anyone. I think was the issue that they'd just gotten so low on routine.
Yeah. And that might be the case, but this is just to put them into full member status. Yep.
Well, thank you to these residents for volunteering.
Yes.
It's what makes the township go. Next, moving on to the managers' report, we have the draft community survey.
You do have to appoint both.
Sorry. I have a motion to appoint Nicholas Deldotto to the open space review board for a three-year term, effective immediately, expiring January one, twenty twenty eight.
They're moved.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I have a motion to approve Chris Robinson and Pownell Jones as members of the historic commission for three-year terms, effective commission for three-year terms, effective immediately with term expirations of January one, twenty twenty eight?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chris, do you want to talk about the community survey?
Yeah, just as a discussion point, no need to vote on anything for it, but as you remember, ETC Institute is our community survey kind of partner, uh, to get the, uh, survey actually implemented in the New Garden with the respondents, uh, kind of done on a random sampling basis. Uh, so with that, the draft template, if you will, uh, is in tonight's packet. Um, you know, it's, it's a pretty lengthy document. There's all the survey questions there and it's just ones where, uh, we went with department-focused areas for, uh, kind of seeking information in return about just giving us a general sense of how we're doing. Um, and that's, you know, what their value add is, is to give you that kind of statistical survey, uh, assessment of satisfaction, if you will, for departmental services. Um, and of course, this folds into that dialogue about if we see deficiencies, how to address it in the annual budgeting cycle. So you can ramp up investments into certain areas that you want to see improvements. Um, or just different ways to kind of maybe address programmatic solutions to get it done on a more efficient basis. So all that's to say, it's a kind of a full roster rundown. If you, uh, think of it like there's your list of in, inputs, residents are welcome as well, uh, maybe submit some direct to office at New Garden with maybe some recommendations of add-ons to the survey, uh, so we can consider it because the goal is to get this thing kind of into a implementation state by mid-May, just to make sure the process kicks off on time. So, because it was still about a six-week process to do the sampling. So any questions? You don't have to vote on anything. It's just there it is. Look at the questions. You think you like them? Good. If you want to make changes, just, uh, you know, fold them over to me. And of course, they're there for input.
Thanks, Chris.
Uh, the next manager report item, uh, for historic commission updates. Uh, this was just, uh, membership reaching out to the township staff, talking about, uh, some other considerations. They're looking for a store commission. One was actually moving, uh, more towards an official, non-official meeting pace. So they would do quarterly official meetings and kind of monthly, non-official type meetings, just their business agenda is pretty light. And so one kind of is around potential, like actual land development type related issues. We'll think of it like a property of interest that's looking to be, uh, either, uh, redeveloped or whatever would be revitalized. Another one is just more of like historic society-type topics and dialogues and stuff. So, uh, which ones are more formal, like recorded meetings? And which ones are more like, uh, just, you know, kind of a society getting together and talking about history in the township? So, uh, they recommended this to the township. I know that might entail a potential change to the ordinance in terms of monthly versus quarterly meetings and just wanted to get your inputs before that happens. Um, and they've also been providing feedback to, uh, the zoning ordinance team in terms of just the historic, uh, article language. Uh, they've been showing some pretty positive support. And of course, you know, want to align with our township comp plan of having more kind of robust language to protect historic properties in the township. And, and they've been pretty good at providing inputs and we're seeking to make sure that that's included.
Just a plug for the historic commission out in the display case here. The historic commission has a number of photographs before and after of many buildings in the township. I looked at it on the way in today. It's great. I would encourage everybody to take a look at it.
Uh, but that's really it. And, um, if you're okay with that, then I'll work with Winnie. And if it requires an actual, like, ordinance change, that's what we would bring forward. Uh, last but not least, uh, we had public outreach meeting number three back in February, I think it was. Uh, I think it was the last Wednesday of February. Uh, we've gotten a lot of feedback, a lot of commentary out there in former, uh, kind of meetings, one of them in March. Uh, but the goal is still to do public outreach meeting number four as another moment in time for a workshop-type session. And of course, that lends itself to what is seen as a optimal format setting. Uh, how would you like to see it structured? Um, so last time we did, it was kind of more of like tabling-type sessions. You were able to kind of engage with consultants to kind of walk around and see kind of all like, it was like a science fair-type approach. Um, you know, there's been folding around of maybe some more dialogue-intensive type sessions. And of course, that means that it would have to be structured in a different way because you can't have two hundred people flood in at once and then have a good conversation. Um, it's just kind of what that means. And so we would take that feedback and come up with a game plan to do it. And then, of course, get that advertisement out as early as possible to set expectations before people show up to the meeting, uh, because of course, you can get kind of like the mob-type situations to take over and we're trying to avoid that. This is more about workshops, dialogue and productivity than anything else. Uh, so with that, if you had any inputs of what you think would be successful, you know, that's kind of what this moment in time is for. So open for interpretations here.
I think we've covered.
So what, I mean, would you want to see something like, uh, it was floated to potentially do like, uh, two or three different, like, registered, kind of come in and you do like a roundtable-type discussion. It would be kind of staffed out. So you'd be able to kind of have like small group sessions and kind of gets people, uh, it, it's, it's almost like at an elementary level. Like you walk in here, it's your num- your numerical popsicle stick. You go to your site, you sit down and you kind of have like a community engagement session. Uh, so it kind of separates like, like-mindedness and kind of gets more of a diverse dialogue, which I think is very helpful for the public process. Um, so something like that. If that's what you would want to do. Um, otherwise, you know, can it just be, uh, so we're trying to keep the public hearings, which are going to be in the future, as public hearings. That's, you know, line up down the middle of the line, approach the microphone, you know, kind of give your commentary and that, and that, there's going to be time for that. And this is not that time. This is more productive to get the draft article more towards ready state for approvals and hearings, excuse me. So, uh, if that's seen as consensus, you know, we'll definitely start working on that.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
Okay.
And don't forget public comment.
Yes.
All right.
But can you come up and, uh, just announce your name and address? Thanks for sticking around. Thanks, everybody, for sticking around.
Hello, I'm Linda Bunting, Egypt Run Road. Um, sorry, I'm trying to be part of the discussion that happened twenty minutes ago, but, um, yeah, I, I'm not an economist by any stretch, but I, I understand the, uh, supply and demand end of things. Um, I understand the township needs revenue and, um, the more money they get, the lower our taxes are going to be. Um, I can see a sports complex being, okay, there is a big demand for this in our area. Um, you mentioned the half hour away, uh, end of things. Um, but yeah, people that are closer than, than the half hour, uh, might come to this area. Um, I do see it benefiting like Kennet, you know, an area like that, um, more than, than us. Um, you know, they have hotels, they have the restaurant, more restaurants and things. Um, so it, it kind of boosts their economy, I feel like, uh, more than it would benefit ours. Um, but I also, so I, I can see the need for something. Um, I just don't, and the, and the, the merit to that idea in general being great for, you know, ki- uh, community and people wanting to put their, uh, kids into the sports and things. Um, but, you know, the real question is, is it right for this particular, is it the right fit for, uh, this particular, uh, community? And, um, on Egypt Run Road, we have a situation where, um, the things that are happening are, are the, the school, related to school and Saint Rocco's Church. Um, both of those things have time, um, constraints. So, you know, the streets are flooded right at drop-off time and pickup time. Then you have the church and it has these certain times that it's all happening. So it's like, you know, there's a safety concern um, that we have because everybody's in such a rush these days. And, you know, you're, you know, you're out trying to play wiffle ball with your kid and then people are going past all of a sudden. And it turns into a very busy situation. Um, I feel like that's going to happen again with a sports complex where everybody has games at certain times and things. Um, and it's just kind of like trying to have a shark in a small tank or something like there. It's a, it's a big thing that's going to be, uh, over, kind of overwhelming our streets in order to kind of feed it, you know? Um, so those are my concerns and also the resale value of, of certain, you know, it benefits the township, but as far as a resident goes and, and the homeowner goes, um, you know, the resale value of the ho- homes, I feel like on, on our street are just going down because, um, because it is getting to be a really busy road. And it was so quaint, the things that, um, we liked about it years ago, uh, are not, are not there anymore. And I feel like that would, um, just make it worse. So I just wanted to say, I, I, I understand the need. Um, and, uh, and I just hope we can keep looking, you know, for more options that are, are, are more of a win-win for the township and the residents. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ed Henry at one twenty Lavender Hill, right here in New Garden. Um, I can, and I actually spoke to Rich Gall before he left. I can speak directly to his question because I'm on the board of the Kennet Area Parks, well, that was the old name, the Brandywine Valley Sports and Rec. We actually facilitate a lot of youth sports programs here in the community, lacrosse, um, field hockey, volleyball. We also oversee ice hockey for Kennet High School and Middle School. The question about it impacting the schools, when Kennet Middle redid their floors and the gymnasium, they actually did not want anyone to utilize the facility because it is for the students. Um, we do utilize Legacy Field in Kennet, but again, the schools, if we came to them and said we have a better facility, they would actually prefer that. So there is definitely a need. We also run a summer, uh, summer camp program, which New Garden is kind enough to let us use the park. We've outgrown that. It would be great to have another facility. So while I'm not going to speak to the exact location, and I know that, uh, at least the, the tourism model is different, there's definitely a need from a community standpoint for field space, for court space. I would love some ice hockey because again, we do that for all of the local schools. So there's definitely a need for it. And it would, and as far as it benefiting the different communities, I know from the numbers that I think approximately two-thirds of the kids that we take care of right now are within New Garden specifically. So most of them are in our community and not in the borough or in Kennet Township, so.
Good, thank you, Ed. Anybody else with public comment? Nope.
Just one thing. Um, first, I'm not, you know, for or against. I, I do see the need, right? Um, but I think it is important that we just mention really quick that this is, this discussion of like what could potentially go there is really just of a long list of things that could potentially go there. And in addition, it's in conjunction with traffic calming measures that's a PennDOT road that are already taking place. So PennDOT's very much like involved in these conversations and that's not something that's being ignored. Um, it, I think sometimes we have these conversations like, well, what are you, you know, what are you going to do about PennDOT? How are we going to incre- improve roads, all of that stuff, right? Well, that is taking place, right? It's just not the purpose of the conversation today or, you know, when we have these specific agenda items. So I just want to just call that out. I think, you know, if anyone wants to talk about what's been done, because I don't, there's a lot of new faces here. I think Chris or any of us would really be happy to kind of go through that with, with anyone, uh, if they. Okay. There's a lot of people that but we have to, somebody has to buy the property. It's private property. It's their private property. I can't tell them what to do with their property, right? The same way I can't don't point your, don't, don't do that. Don't yell at me. I'm being respectful.
I do.
I do?
Yeah. Yes.
It's on a major road.
Yeah. Because I grew up here. I know what it's like to not have anything to do. Yeah, because I was also, I was also here eighteen months or two years ago when we had six times as many people here screaming at me about their taxes.
So we have made a lot of efforts to preserve land. We have a lot of open space. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you. And I think we're on the same side and we're aligned, but it is private property. It's private property. We can't, I can't force somebody to sell their yard, their property. Okay, I'm going to write that down, Mr. Reese.
I do, I do want to say the board has been discussing this for many years. The pre- the board previous to this board has discussed this as a topic. Um, it was, it preceded the current township manager. This is not Chris's idea to do this and he's not forcing it down anybody's throat. The previous township manager worked on this. Chris inherited it. Chris is working for the board and he's following through on this at our request. So this is not some concoction that Chris came up with. So I just want to make that clear to people that Chris is doing an excellent job. Chris is a huge asset to the New Garden Township and I think he should be thought of in the right sense.
And to your point about the zoning, and it's been mentioned about at least twenty times, it's not listed, there is nothing in the zoning right now that lists a sports complex. So what that means is they can do it wherever they want.
So it, it is currently in the UDC zoning. It is currently in the UDC zoning that a correct. And, and the sports complex is there. We are being proactive by doing a feasibility study. And, and I have similar questions to, um, the lady that spoke a minute ago. It, you know, who's this going to benefit? It's going to benefit the community at large. What is the, and, and one of my questions would be to follow up, Chris, is what's the economic input that would come back to New Garden Township? Because as she said, Kennet Borough has all the restaurants. Kennet Township has all the hotels. There's, there's none. There's no rooms available. That was pointed out earlier. And, and again, these are just things that we have to work through. As far as the open space, and I'm going to go on a rant, so you're going to have to give me a few minutes. Um, in two thousand and five, we adopted an open space referendum. Since then, we have preserved how many acres, Chris?
Uh, fifteen hundred acres plus, which is a on the way to being an additional eight hundred via the open space review board plan. So in its full, kind of full realized plan, about twenty-three percent of the township will be concerned.
So, and the county's goal was twenty-five percent. And unfortunately, New Garden Township did not adopt zoning, nor were we proactive until two thousand and three on open space. And we already have almost accomplished the goal of what Chester County does. We're one of very few. Secondly, I'll concentrate on three properties. Saint Anthony's, which is adjacent to that. It has well over eleven thousand linear feet of stream bank. The Reynolds property, we, we per- we don't own it. We purchased the development rights. It has thirteen thousand linear feet of stream bank. That's a hundred and seventy-five acres. Saint Anthony's roughly one thirty-seven. And then we purchased the golf course, which has a little over ninety-five hundred, which is currently under construction to do a model stream restoration for water quality. So I think we've been proactive and this, this didn't happen overnight. This didn't happen with this current board. A lot of it did, but a lot of this has been worked through the years. As I said, two thousand and three, we started talking about an open space referendum to preserve quality of life, wildlife. And for me, it's about clean water. Um, we're not there yet, but we are doing something. And, and I get it. And I understand. I know where you live, Egypt Run Road. The biggest problem was the Egypt Run Road is when school lets out, the school buses go flying down the roads. Mom and dad, if they live over in Bankroll for it woods, when they're bringing their kids to the middle school, they go flying up the road. So it's, it's twice a day that the schools impact you. So, so the biggest problem is, is the access on Route forty-one. How do we address that? Because if there was clear access on forty-one that was safe, they wouldn't be cutting down Egypt Run Road. That's just my opinion. I don't know. Um, but. But I feel for you with all the cut through traffic on such a narrow and rural road. It's, it's one of few that are really left in Chester County and Egypt Run Road is, is one. But that particular section. What's that? What happens to it? So for me, my generation already spent the money. It's preserved. It can grow up to be a weed patch. It's preserved. I, I feel my part's done. There's some plans for some walking trails and scale back. You, you can't have mega parks. There should be some stream water, stream bank restoration, as we're doing at Loch Naren. That all helps with wildlife and the water quality runoff from our township. But there has to be room for growth somewhere. And where is that? And again, it goes back to what Christie said, these are all privately owned properties, okay? We don't. We, we don't. That's why it's, that's why it's private. But anyway, that's my rant on open space. And I think the township has done very well and, um, and proactive more. As a matter of fact, we probably have a little too much and we bit off more than we could chew. But we'll catch up and get there, right? Fair.
Yeah, yeah. So a part of economic development is, and as it was done, I'm trying to go back to when we actually set the priorities up. It was about May of last year, just to kind of segue into it. Uh, so the board recommended at least some level of investment towards figuring out approaches to economic development initiatives. One of them being centered around White Clay Point. And that's probably no subverbing kind of discussion. It's been talked about for almost 30 years. Uh, so with that, what works? And all this folds back to who is actually brokering the marketing of that site. And to answer your question, nobody. Uh, it's an asset that sits at the very bottom line of JP Morgan's large portfolio, a company which I have no conflict of interest working with prior to state. That was a distressed asset that was basically folded into a massive overtake of distressed assets from the old pre-real estate properties that JP Morgan assumed. And if you understand what the site demands, there's no infrastructure under the ground or even around it. It's an old composting tipping facility, so half of it's paved. It's a crumbling site. Uh, it's very blighted on the site there as well. Uh, and there's no real movement for them to really do anything with it because it's just an appreciating pile of dirt over time. Like that's all it is to them until somebody comes along and says, we're interested in that site. This is what we want to do. Now, the most of the majority of that, in any instance, is always going to be housing builders. Like they're the number one drivers for interest in new properties. That's not, you know, kind of outside the normal folk of things. But who is working with the understanding that this is a zone mixed use site? And who is figuring out what are those? And this is what we talked about, ratable commercial functions that make sense for the township if they're built in our locality. And so we have Act 511 taxes. Two of those are related to amusement functions and to hotel tax type functions. Now, we may or may not get that because you'd have to build that model to get that. And that might not be the outcome that works for us. We'll go down that road. But it was to, when you go down economic development path of feasibility, it's a performance of figuring out options rather than just kind of talking about it. This is plain fact because it's been assessed with the validity of X that says, if you do this, this is the return. And so our level is encouraging, if it's something that can be built there, towards developers to get say, here's a commercial mixed use site. Here's a force multiplier of an anchor. Uh, is definitely going to get interest. Um, and it's going to add, you talk about other amenities on the site. It's not just going to be a big box surrounded by nothing. It's going to be a box surrounded by, they call it market supportable retail. And I'm not talking refrigerator sales. I'm talking about restaurants, kind of stuff like that, things that are amenities for the community. And those are small business owners that get direct spend based off of the activity here. So these are entrepreneurial types of opportunities that didn't exist without this thing. And that's a, I would consider to be a strong economic development outcome because it's money invested for people to be able to build a business in the township that doesn't exist here today. Yeah, and we funded this. Yeah.
We funded it.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
But whatever it is, it's all, you know, it's all the work that needs to develop what's going to come. We're going to find people to fill the space and it's going to be what it's going to be. I mean, they have their right to develop. What is the principle?
No. No, no. It's fair.
Green water.
So like, let's just move off of 41, right? We have nu- numerous zoning that would prohibit this ever becoming Delco. Like that's not even a possibility, right? So that's, but you're just looking at one page in a book, right? So if. Agreed. Right?
Yeah.
I think we're in agreement, right? So I, I think we're trying to balance, right? How to have some development while preserving the integrity of most of the township, right? And I think just, just to be fair, there has to be a little bit of movement in these busier corridors. But it's not because of development in New Garden. Right? Because that's not happened. I, I get it. I get it, right? Right? I get it. Right?
Yeah.
I just want to point out, oh, I don't know, sorry, real fast, that, you know, this is a chance to get ahead of it. Because I think what happened along Route 1 was that people weren't prepared. And like Steve said, we didn't do zoning until way too late. So Kennett's getting developed. I remember growing up in Kennett. I went to Kennett High School 20 years ago. And I remember what Kennett was like back in the late 90s, early 2000s. That Kennett's dead, like it died 15, 20 years ago. Yeah, when I was looking for a house, I was able to afford here because it was still rural and developed. So this is our opportunity to get ahead of it because it's going to happen. They're going to just keep moving out. People from New York are already moving to Philly. People from Philly are going to be moving out here. So we can like put up a fireball of where we want these things to happen. And then we can leave the rural parts lovely and beautiful. And I, I always try and keep in mind of the fact that I moved into a suburban, my parents moved us into a suburban development. Harrogate was a beautiful cornfield for most of my life. And then all of a sudden I went to college and when I came back, it wasn't. They have just as much of a right to live here as, you know, I did because I'm an interloper. I'd be there. Steve was born here. So it was a dirt track for him where I live, you know, Somerset Lake. So that's just something that I try, try and keep in mind when considering these.
One last thing with the, um, police, they came in, they were talking about purchasing a scale. I think the intent is to really curb some of the commercial traffic and have a little bit of control over that. So we didn't really get a chance to talk about that, but I think that's something that we can look into for Egypt Run. Maybe talk to the schools, see if they can stop.
Yeah, and that's, like I say, to, today's about, like I said, it continues. The economic development is a lot about discovery and just figuring out options. That's really what this is about. Um, so it's also one where even if you look at it, you might want it, can you finance it and fund it? And that might be something because I would never recommend to this community and, and, and based off of our own financial capacity, which is heavily limited, just based off of the fact that we're a second-class township in Pennsylvania. We have, we have limited mechanisms to do big, broad things. Uh, and that's where private interest really kind of wins the day. And it's one where if these models are of interest, then that's one where it's, it's feasible on the site. It's dual because the land use allows for it. So there you go. And if it's not, and they require, say, hey, if you want this, municipality has to contribute to it. There's very little margins for us to not kind of say, well, we want it so bad, but we have to throw the baby out with the bathwater because all the revenue's coming in, essentially going to financing the thing in the first place. So this isn't to say that this is what the, you know, North Star is for this site. It's just an option. Um, and there's still market supportable commercial for small level retail there based off of the fact that it's just on a state corridor. Uh, if it's a mixed use residential function, you're going to get some level of residential there at some point in time based off of the fact that it's a zone property for that. Um, and the demand for housing is at an astronomical level right now. Um, and those are just looking at what makes sense for what we would want to be considered as a potential partner in the actual build out of that site. So that's kind of, like I said, just there is no predetermined outcome.
Get two more comments and then we all have to go home. Don?
It's, it's, it's really not because it impacts the schools. The school population is down like 30%. So that's why we're seeing year over year, this increase in our school taxes because the schools are, because of senior housing. We have a, we have for years, right? I mean, am I wrong? We've, we've focused on 55 and over communities, thinking they were less stressful on resources. We've seen an increase in services and additionally a decrease in the school population because that's where they, 55, 55 and over, they don't have kids going to schools. So. There are developments. So you're now talking, you're going from commercial to a development, right? Residential. So you're talking about something that's a high burden on the taxpayers, just letting you know.
Yeah, and, uh, not, not to kind of go down a rabbit hole. If you want to put like a, like a matrix chart of like unit type to like revenue neutral, positive or negative. Uh, but if you would think of it like that, you know, uh, it's kind of twofold. If you built these kind of large estate type mansion type functions, you know, obviously in a former era, families, big families move in there and that's kind of what happened during the 90s. And it was like, that really just put a stress on school systems to kind of have big homes, big families moving in kind of at one time. So they're always seen as kind of like cost negative uh, because they're creating conditions for, you know, 3X kids per property, something like that. On the, you know, kind of consideration for unit types for what we consider to be like business professionals, people that have dual incomes, no kids, stuff like that. You're looking for different modern unit types that would be, you know, split level type of homes, uh, kind of back townhouses, different types of units and products out there. You know, they would be seen as more of like, well, you're talking about like, you know, positive for earned income and positive for property tax. Senior apartments are, are, are there a missing unit type? But if you're going to get involved as a township for advocating for it, um, because Pennsylvania taxes not, doesn't re-tax on retirement income. So you're really just getting the generated value. And I know it sounds kind of like, and you know, kind of lack of empathy on it, but it's essentially you're getting kind of like a multifamily commercial assessment on the property. And that's really what you're getting out of the site. Because the majority of the actual income tax component is non-viable. It's not there because most of the people are in retirement status and they're not paying income tax. Uh, so that's just kind of that. So I would say then you have to look at what the value add is for what this means for service costs. And, and it's been shown through multiple studies that it does stress ambulatory type systems as well. So your ALS services are going to get more calls for service. So everything kind of has multiple considerations for it. Um, the goal for our zoning ordinance, excuse me, and for looking at unit types in the area has been to address missing middle as kind of the strategy moving forward. Mostly is to kind of say that we are in a pretty negative drop in trend in school age children in our township. And it's only going in the further in the wrong direction. Another one is, is, um, and that's been proved out. I think we talked about our last zoning meeting. Uh, kids under the age of nine have dropped 50% in the last 15 years. Um, 25 to 44 year olds have dropped almost over a quarter, uh, same thing. So we're just kind of, our, our, our kind of population distribution charts kind of just shifted to the right. And it's one where what makes communities kind of. kind of population distribution charts kind of just shifted to the right and it's one where what makes communities kind of viable into the future it's a mixture of all kind of representative demographics that kinda have more of like a normal distribution chart um and that's through lane use planning and intentionality of delivering unit types that maybe that would be attractive to a young professional you know group um and you know put it on Route forty-one and then that development incentive uh creates the conditions because you're talking back to the comprehensive plan the number one addressed issue in the comprehensive plan you know wasn't side roads everything it was to enhance Route forty-one I mean that's what it was if you opened up kind of page one of the twenty eighteen comp plan for the township it was enhanced Route forty-one so what does that mean what does enhance mean it's not identified uh they have corridor studies on it you know it's it's widening allow for better ingress and egress often to side routes uh kind of more intersections that have been kind of improved upon whether it be signalized or roundabouts whatever that means uh better kind of right away you know kind of improvements for pedestrian and multimodal type initiatives now it's the biggest issue that that road is essentially owned by not essentially it is owned by Penn dot so you have to get them to the table to understand what is the demand coming from your existing state to do any changes and right now it's kind of not there because the primary user on a day-to-day basis of Route forty-one is more of like just put like the walls on each side and it's a commercial trucking thoroughfare that's really what they see it so really it's kind of get in and out of the township along Route forty-one not stop along Route forty-one and enter into some of these side roads um and so you're trying to figure out how to structure that's what the Act two oh nine kind of project is all about structure in a put it on Route forty-one cuz that's what the complan says uh put unit types of this type that are feature-rich for younger kind of groups to come in to kind of replenish um and does that get us some viable amenities such as kind of we'll call them entertainment mixed functions such as retail options small businesses we'll think of like a small business kind of function on there and put it on Route forty-one put it on Baltimore Pike and that's not coming out of anywhere or nowhere excuse me that's coming out of our own complan our complan says to do this uh so that's been part of a strategic document that was developed almost coming on a decade ago uh and that's kind of driving a lot of the visioning for this and so hopefully it's gonna be more of a deliberate outcome and kind of against what had been done historically which is just build it on the fly and then just deal with the issues down the road and I think that's kind of hopefully showing a level of what we call it smart growth initiatives like sustainable development um that's not a buzzword that is actually something that you can do but you have to be intentional and strategic with that so
thank you Chris we're gonna adjourn the meeting can I have a motion to adjourn
second
call in favor thanks for the commentary
everyone gets
thanks for snuckin' around
thank you everyone
the most people that have ever stuck around so good job yeah yeah hello